Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled board meeting on today, April 23rd, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. And real quick, we'll do roll call and then we'll start.
Trustee Hodges.
Present.
Trustee Flores.
Present.
Trustee Young.
Present.
Vice President Amboy.
Present.
President Fox.
Present.
Trustee Morales.
Present.
Trustee Simmons.
Present.
We have a quorum.
And now with that, let's... A special thank you to Jesse Bethel High School, NJROTC. Do I have a motion for the adoption of our agenda? Trustee Flores?
Make a motion to adopt our agenda.
Trustee Hodges?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges?
Aye.
Trustee Flores?
Aye.
Trustee Young?
Aye.
Vice President Amboy?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
We are now, our unanimously board approval for the agenda. Now we are down to Agenda Item Two, Board Presentations.
So, good evening, trustees. This, we have three presentations, Grace Patterson Elementary, Federal Terrace Elementary, and Jesse Bethel High School. We will go in that order. So, Grace Patterson team, if you can make your way up to the podium, we will begin. And thank you all for being here.
I'm Principal of Patterson Elementary. And I have a few of my staff members behind me. They're just hanging out for moral support. So, we're going to go over a couple of different things, initiatives that we really focused on this year, including our attendance, our PBIS, the academic piece, and our expanded learning. And then we had a really large focus on their community-based education this year. So, our current attendance rate, we're looking about the same as we did last year. We're hanging in at that 90% to 91% average daily attendance, which is an improvement from my first year of 2023, but we'd like to see it improve more. We have done a lot of incentives. Go ahead and flip. And we're hanging tight in our 34% chronically absent. What I've noticed within our chronic is that we're no longer having those severely chronic kids. It's more we're hanging in that 80% to 90%. So, we have our target few that are severely chronic, but it's a larger in that 80%, 90%. They're just constantly getting sick. And we're battling still the reference of staying home for five days when they have COVID. So, to combat that, we have done a lot of activities. One of the things you saw was our show-up video. And we got to hang in the movie theaters for quite a while with our work from Karen Shaw, MITL, who put that together, and the fifth and sixth graders who really showed out for us. With my CWA, we were able to arrange a Zumba party. So, someone came in and led a Zumba class for my primary kids and my upper grade kids who have 95 and above attendance. We've done glow parties. That's a hit for my TK'ers and my little kids. I've learned my fifth and sixth graders are not into it anymore. I've got to find something new for them. We did a Christmas bingo activity where every day they came, they marked a letter off, and then we raffled off movie tickets. We had various donations of prizes. And so, about 10 kids took home prizes for that, for making sure that they stayed every day in December, because that's a big drop-off for us. And then our March Madness incentive, we opened our Paw Bucks store and I paid them 100 Paw Bucks. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Another thing that my CWA, Deidra Carter and I came up with is, we need to celebrate our parents. So, we have 18 students who have perfect attendance from August 18th through March 18th, and we wanted to celebrate them. And so, we brought them in and we had lunch with them. They had a certificate, and they got to just hang out with their kiddo and have lunch at Patterson. And this is some of our families. And then our Paw Bucks store is a weekly positive behavior support store, and the kids get to go shopping. So, we have prizes ranging from little Squish Balls to dolls, to puzzles. The one that I'm hearing they want the most is Lunch with Ms. Martinez. And Ms. Martinez has to go to McDonald's and get them their lunch. They're asking for fire wings and all kinds of craziness. They haven't gotten there yet, so I haven't had to pay out too much. The other one, I have a class that's plotting against me, and they're going to raise $5,000 to pie me in the face. So, I've got some sixth graders who are out to get me. But you can see my TK'ers waiting very patiently to get into the store to do their shopping. So, that's our Friday activity. And then I have my Counseling and Rich class. One of the ways we mainstream them is they come and help me run the store. So, my site safety runs it. I support her. And then they are out there monitoring the line, and they're engaging with the class. And if you've seen any of the stories of Patterson from the beginning of the year, we've come a long way. We have really focused our core time this year around instructor-student talk and the DO-K questions. My teachers are amazing at the sixth step phonics. You can walk in any room in K-2, and you're going to see it. It's going to be stellar. So, this year, we really wanted to uplift the DO-K level questioning and partner it to writing. So, Leva worked with us around some writing strategies and asked planning for the DO-K two and three questions. And that has been our focus for this year. Moving into next year, we'll continue that and then really supporting the UFLI adoption. But in addition to that, we have our Hey Tutors who are supporting our second through sixth graders with a focus on SIPs. I have a Cal Maritime student who comes in weekly. He's bilingual, so he supports my first through sixth graders in small groups or one-on-one in our pods to make sure that they are getting the support they need. I had before and after-school interventions in K, first, third, fourth, and sixth from January through May. So, they are still going, and that's targeted to the individual needs in their classrooms. And of course, we have small group instruction. And so, that's a glance into what it looks like here at Patterson. Go ahead, Katie. It's okay. We started a new program in our expanded learning program, and you can see examples of it. It's called Book Nook. You guys approved that contract for us right around January. So, we have a one-to-four ratio, so one tutor to four students. The kids are sitting in their grade levels, but they're working on anything from grade level appropriate to significantly below. I have a fourth grader, my daughter is a fourth grade student at Patterson. She's probably working on first grade curriculum because of her diagnosis of dyscalculia. So, she sits with her fourth grade peers. No one knows anything different, but she's working on what she needs, and that's happening across the room. And what we're finding is that they're highly engaged, because they're not hearing me, they're not hearing their current teachers. They're hearing a new voice. And so, the kids come out of that tutoring time really excited. I learned this today. I did that. And so, they're really showing. It's increased our expanded learning attendance to 96%. Of the kids are showing up for this three times a week tutoring. And we will run that through the end of May. So, I'm looking forward to seeing how it impacts our NWA. We have our soccer tournament, and our kids just won their soccer second game. So, I left there and came here. So, they're doing an amazing job of that. And it's really one of those things that encourages our kids to come to school. If there's nothing else at Patterson, soccer is life. So, this is encouraging not only school attendance, it's encouraging after-school attendance, because they know if they're not in the classroom, Ms. Diaz is not taking them on Wednesday. So, this has really been helpful in increasing that attendance as well. And they're really excited about the uniforms and getting to share all those things. And like I said, our community-centered education, Patterson is in the midst of a really solid community, even though it doesn't always have the best reputation. One of the things that we did is the Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day with Dr. Patrick and her sorority. And we started at the Norman King Center, and we walked up Porter Street. And then many of the sisters came and read to the students, and they purchased a Ruby Bridge book, various versions for the grade levels. And it's one of the things that kids still are talking about. And so, hopefully, we can continue next year. Another one is our partnership with Cal Maritime. So, our fifth and sixth grade classes took a walking field trip to a college campus. Many of them didn't even realize that that college was right there. And some of her parents didn't even realize that that college was right there. So, they got to go and check out the campus. I think they had lunch in the dining hall, really got to experience what it looks like to be a student at Cal Maritime. In addition, we recently did our Junior Explorer Program, where the students, on a Saturday, with Mr. Reed and other staff members, go out and work with the cadets on the boats. And they do hands-on science experiments. I talked to one of the students today, and she said that without the program, because she's done it twice now, she wouldn't realize the career options that Cal Maritime offers. And so, now she's looking at what, coming to school at Maritime, looking at careers in oceanography and whatnot. So, it's exciting to see the impact it's having on their planning for the future. In addition, Jo Ellen takes really good care of my students. She's bringing snacks for our testers. Next week, she brought welcome back to school kits for every kid. So, they got school supply kits in addition to what we already supply, but they've got to take home crayons, paper, pencils, you name it. They pretty much gathered it for us. And then this year, she added the kits for the teachers. She says, "The kids always get something. We've got to take care of the teachers, too." So, they, every teacher got a tote bag full of goodies to make sure that they were taken care of as well. And then, if you want to come hang with us on Friday... 12:15, Mrs. Reed? Drop, egg drop?
Egg drop. Egg drop is happening.
On Friday, we are doing our drop-in to testing, and they are creating the egg carriers. And we have borrowed the maintenance department's boom truck. They're going to come, put a maintenance worker up there, and we're going to drop some eggs. So, if you want to do our drop-in to testing with us, that's going to be Friday at 11:15. And thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Trustee Flores?
Want to thank you for your presentation. I just had a few questions. What grades are you seeing the most issues with attendance-wise? Is there a specific age range or grade?
We often see it in our TK-2.
Okay. And can you tell us a little more of the importance of why?
I think...
That's an issue?
I think part of it is, for TK and K, it's their first time in the school setting, and so, parents don't realize the importance. They think kindergarten's not required, TK's not required. So, if they don't come, it doesn't matter. Also, their immune systems are not used to being around everybody, and so, they get taken out harder than some of our kiddos who are there more often, or have been there longer, and have built that immune system up. So, we're seeing a lot of issues in our TK and K especially, but it's TK-2 mostly.
So, with that, feel that there's support, or the attendance programs that have been rolled out from the district? Are they helping you? Do you feel supported? Are they lacking anywhere? Or what's your experience with them?
I think that the addition of the CWA, the Child Welfare Liaison, has been vital in addressing our chronics, because she's building those strong relationships with families. Oftentimes, when I reach out or my office staff reach out, they won't answer our calls. But as soon as she picks up the phone, or she sends that text, they're communicating with her. So, that has been beneficial to us. I think the other thing is, she sits down and really explains the impact. And even though I might have said it, their teacher said it, hearing it from somebody in the community who doesn't necessarily have that principal title behind her, I think they're listening to her a little differently. She often comes across as, "I'm from South Vallejo. I raised my boys in this neighborhood." And so, she comes from that lens, and it helps them break down those barriers.
One more follow-up, kind of regarding attendance. So, knowing that December has a big drop-off, have you prepared, or have you guys made contingencies on how to address that so far as independent studies? Or, you know, I mean, do you guys prepare for that?
Yeah. So, we really targeted, Deidra and I looked back to see who had the extended vacations in years past, and she reached out to all those families. "Are you going to travel?" We know that oftentimes, they're heading to Mexico. So, "Are you planning to travel for the holidays? Are you going to be gone for more than one day? Let's get you an independent study package." And she was making those personal calls. We also put out flyers right away saying, "Okay, if you think you're going to be out, come in and see us. We'll get you the packets together." The other one we looked at, we weren't really prepared for, was Easter. And the Monday after Easter, we didn't have enough data to say, "Was it going to impact?" And now we know for next year, I need to advocate more for the Friday and the Monday of the Easter week.
More questions for you. In your presentation, I heard you say, "DO-K."
Depth of knowledge.
Can you explain what that is and the importance of it, and why you're focusing on it?
Yep. So, DO-K is the depth of knowledge. We want our kids to not only get the basics, but to push them into that higher-level thinking. One example I can think of today from a classroom I was in, they were doing area and perimeter. And the teacher very easily could have just said, "You're going to multiply length times width." But instead, he's pushing them to explain it themselves. "What do you need to do? And why, how are you going to do it?" And he's asking them to draw pictures and whatnot. And he's not giving them that area is length times width. Even though that's how we taught it, and we learned it, he's forcing them to figure it out on their own.
So, for a parent that just doesn't get it, what does that mean?
That, for our community members, it's those opportunities to really dive in and show their understanding. So, we don't want just the who, what, the who and the why, that I can look right here and say, "Okay, the sky is blue." We would like you to know why the sky is blue, or what, to be able to explain how you came to the answer.
Last question, I promise. Flavor. What flavor pie are they planning on hitting you with?
White whipped cream.
Thank you.
Trustee Simmons or Trustee Morales? Trustee Simmons, please.
Thank you for your presentation. I want to say that I actually passed your soccer game on the way here. When we were dropping my sister off, she was like, "Oh, is that my school playing?" Because she goes to Federal Terrace, and I guess their uniforms are also red. And I'm like, "No, that's not your school." But I have a question. So, about the Expanded Learning Program, is that after-school? Or do you have, like, specific slots during the school day for the Expanded Learning Program?
So, the Expanded Learning is the after-school program. So, the Book Nook is taking place three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, for about 40 minutes.
My turn.
Okay.
I love that you were talking about the DO, the depth of knowledge, and that you're focusing on two and three, the higher levels of questioning, not the lower levels. So, that was awesome to hear. Also, the culture in your school, the different things you talked about, motivation, and just the things, it sounds like it's more student-centered, because the prizes, like the pie or the McDonald's or such, it's what the students would pick, not what an adult would say your prize should be. So, I like that that's more student-driven. At my school, our principal just did the pie, but the kids didn't know it was shaving cream. It's just in a tin with these wearing glasses. Anyway, so it was, anyway, it was a mess. But it's a good thing the kids love it, and it's a nice way to build the rapport and to win something. He also got dunked once, so maybe you'll have a dunk take, too. No, no, okay.
I was told, "No, not allowed."
No dunk, oh. Well, it was just, it actually was just buckets of water and just on a chair.
Don't give them ideas.
It was just buckets of water sitting on the chair.
Don't give them ideas. I got staff members over there.
It was actually the PTA doing it.
We don't want the liability. President Fox.
Buckets of water. Anyways. It's nice also how much they earn for their Paw Bucks and what they can, or the motivational, we heard about the attendance. I really liked, what's the program you said even your daughter's doing, where they're all at their own level, but no one knows, because it's all individually based? What was that called?
It's called Book Nook.
Okay. And that's just something newer?
It's something we're piloting here at Patterson.
Can't wait to hear how it's going and what results, or what you're seeing with results for decoding comprehension and so forth, how it's helping the students. So, that'll be exciting to hear how that's going for you. And I think that was everything. Thank you very much for your presentation and for all of you being here today.
Thank you, and I'll be there tomorrow morning for the learning walks.
I'll see you tomorrow.
All right.
Next, we have...
Next, we have the team from Federal Terrace.
So, good evening. My name is Marissa Carbonell. I'm the proud principal at Federal Terrace. I'm also tired, and I'm also old. So, hang in there with me. About three years ago, we started a revolution at Federal Terrace, right? We started a revolution where our school became a professional learning community, a PLC. And we became a PLC when we, the professional educators, started and became engaged in ongoing, never-ending cycles of collective inquiry, where we met every Wednesday and about twice a month for four hours at a time to discuss who got it and who didn't. And then we planned, and we took action. Because at Federal Terrace, we no longer hope for change, we plan for change. So, can we go to the first slide, please? So, we started an intensive support assistance model project with Solution Tree about three years ago. The purpose was to establish a Solution Tree, in the design of Solution Tree, a professional learning community. This was in cooperation with CCEE. And basically, the Solution Tree approach is this. There's three big ideas, right? I'm not going to read this to you. Three big ideas, right? And within these three big ideas, there are four questions. Everything in the PLC is led with those four questions. But what feeds the four questions and what sustains the three big ideas is the cultural characteristics of we, the professional educators. And so, off we went three years ago. Step number one was to rewrite our mission. I'll never forget, Dr. Luis Cruz, look him up. Dr. Luis Cruz launched us into the project. And his first question, Sherri Summers was in the room, superintendent was in the room. He said, "Marissa, can you please recite your school's mission?" I did not know what my school's, I wrote it. Did not know the mission. And then Sherri Summers, God love her, got up and she said, "Marissa, I don't know the district's mission statement." And so, the step number one was rewrite your mission. But not just rewrite principal in your office, in your little computer. I had to rewrite the mission statement with everyone's input. And when I say everyone, I mean our custodian, our lunch lady, our yard supervisors. We had, just meeting after meeting, we were trained by Solution Tree in how to get to consensus, how to build a consensus. And so, out of consensus came this mission. Our mission is to ensure high levels of academic achievement for all students, preparing every single one of them for future success. We also rewrote our vision. Our vision is who we want to be, right? In five years, the plan was, Dr. Luis Cruz challenged us that five years from three years ago, he's going to read, he wants to read a newspaper article about us where they will state our vision, right? That we're at Federal Terrace, we take collective responsibility for all students' learnings, where we guarantee the essential standards are taught, assessed, and learned, that we use formative assessment to inform our practices and guide our instructional decisions, and to ensure that every student is learning at high levels. But this work, I can't tell you enough, that this work, it was hard. These three years were intense. When this project was called an intensive project, it was intense. It felt insurmountable at times. But with the coaching that we received, you know, we accomplished a lot. And I don't think it would do it any justice if I, principal, presented this work, because, to be honest, I didn't do this work. My teachers did this work. So, to do the project justice and to do the work that we've accomplished over the last three years justice, my teachers will present the bulk of the information tonight.
Hi, welcome, everybody. I'm Katie Vavoda. I'm a first-grade teacher at Federal Terrace. So, one of the things, like Marissa said, we had to completely revamp everything, and there was a lot of breaking down of everything that we thought we knew and felt about what we were really good at. And we had to break it down and realize that we had a lot of growing to do, and that was very humbling. And so, this was our process. We had to take a look. We had to build our leadership team. Our leadership team really needed to be cohesive and brought together. So, then we had to provide that coaching that all of our teachers needed. It wasn't just in one or two of us. It was every single one of us provided within the duty day. So, the first question that was always asked is, what do we want our students to know? Now, we know that the California and the Common Core standards are about this big, and it can be very overwhelming. I believe somebody, and I cannot remember off the top of my head who have said it, that if we were to teach every single standard, it would take 26 years for our students to learn. That's too much. It's overwhelming. So, one of the first things we did is that we pulled out what we call the essential standards. These are our guarantees. When our kids leave first grade at Federal Terrace, this is what they're going to be able to do. That does not mean that we are forgetting the rest of the standards, because we know that they have to be taught. However, these are the ones that we are providing intervention around. These are the ones that we are practicing daily, using district-provided resources and the staff, Hey Tutor, are, not that we have an intervention, but if we did, we were looking at pacing. We were really digging into the standards. What does this standard look like? What does this mean? How are we going to make sure that our kids are getting it? The next question is, how are we going to know when each student gets it? And so, we have our district benchmark assessments. We have our pre-assessments. We have what are we calling common formative assessments. And since we are what we call singletons, each grade level is responsible for teaching and then creating our own common formative assessments. But we come together as vertical teams, and we talk about them. So, I know exactly what's happening in my kindergarten room. The kinder knows what's happening with me. And the same with second grade, we're a K-through team. The three, four, five, six does the exact same thing. These are just some examples of what we have spent a bulk of our time doing. These are our unit plans. The one that's on the left is for kindergarten, and the one that's on the right is for upper grade. And I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. I can't see exactly what grade level. But it lists out the dates. It lists out the standards. It lists out what we're doing. It lists everything. For K through two, we're basing everything that we're doing on the district literacy goals. So, the core A through D and then E for kindergarten by the end of the year, making sure that our kids are able to read CVC words when they end kindergarten. When they leave first grade at the end of the year, 80% of the kids are going to be reading 60% or 60 correct words or more in a minute. The upper grade, they have a very specific standard that they are working on for short periods of time, and they're very intensive in what they're doing. They've got those common formative assessments, and they're doing everything. And it's all standards-based. It's all based within the district-provided resources. So, then the next question is, well, what are we going to do when our students don't get it, when they haven't learned it? So, we know that we can't just hope that they get it. We have to plan for it. So, we do have our Tier One instruction, which is where everybody gets it. Our Tier Two instruction is just digging a little bit deeper for the kids that need that little extra support. And then our Tier Three instruction, where those kids that are really struggling, or maybe they're missing foundational skills, they're getting that additional support at that time. And then how are we going to respond to those students that already know it? Sometimes we forget that they're... Sometimes we forget that there are kids that already can do a lot of this stuff and we can't leave them behind. And it's not fair to just give them a bunch of worksheets and say, here you go. So we are planning above and beyond for those kids that also get it, who deserve to have also very rich curriculum. These are just some of our four questions in action. There's a lot of our kinder teacher, took, takes a lot of pictures with her class and shares them. So you'll see that there are little ones writing, there's little ones doing math. Um, there's some pictures of my class doing math. There's upper grade teams there with kids working. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to my teacher leader.
Uh, good evening. I'm Marie Muscolino Henton. I'm the teacher leader at Federal Terrace. Um, so like Katie and Marissa said, the last three years have been a ton of work. I, I've shared with people I've talked to, I've never worked this hard at work, ever. So um, now, we have to sustain everything that we've built. We want this to continue on. Um, and you know, how do we make sure that those foundations are strong? That they've been laid, that they're strong, they're not gonna break down come year four. Um, so this is where the PLC at Work Sustainability Reports come in. Um, I'm going to invite you to read along with me. Um, I will read the regular font and I invite you to chime in when the text is in bold. And like Katie, I have trouble seeing, so I need to read from my phone. The PLC at Work continuums are based on the premise that it is easier to get from point A to point B if you know where point B is and can recognize it when you get there. The sustaining stage of the continuum explains point B in vivid terms. It describes the better future for your school, or it describes the better future your school is moving toward on its PLC journey. A journey from A to B however, also requires some clarity regarding the starting point. The continuum is also a tool to help educators assess the current position of their school or team so that they can move forward purposely rather than fitfully. So twice a year, beginning year one, we checked in with our head coach and we we rated ourselves, okay? So there are four stages, no, five stages on this continuum. So there's pre-initiating, there's initiating. Year one, this is where we were. You know, some things hadn't gotten started yet. We'd kind of, you know, dipped a toe in here and there. Um, but on year one, we saw what we were doing. But then we also saw what sustaining would look like. So we knew exactly where we were hoping to go. So year two, we're implementing. You know, we're making changes at the system level, at the classroom level. So that's where we were last year. Um, we just did our second sustainability report with our coach. And I'm really proud to say that across the board, we're at the developing sometimes, but mostly we're at the sustaining stage. So, we're in a really good place to continue the work that we've really worked hard to achieve over the last three years. So I'm gonna invite Marissa.
So, about halfway through last year, um, we, you know, we, we as a staff consistently ask ourselves, okay, but, but what are we gonna do when the coaches go away? What are we gonna do when these nationally known amazing coaches, Janelle Keating, Dr. Luis Cruz? You know, when these people go away, Paula Maker, what are we gonna do? You know, they're, they're gone. Um, and it took a lot of soul searching for us. And really, we, as a, as a guiding coalition, we sat and we just, th- this is what we found out, right? How is the PLC movement gonna continue at Federal Terrace on our own? And these are five, I thought we were six. There's six? Five. So these are five things that we identified right away that makes us believe, or no, 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 that's to make us believe. It, it, it tells us we are gonna sustain. So first of all, so our district supports it, we're, the, supports the work that we're doing, right? And there are structures in place that undergird and align with our efforts in the PLC. I'm an English language learner. And so for, I think visually a lot. So when I think of Federal Terrace as this building, the, the underneath of our building, what undergirds my staff in the building is our, is our district. You know, it's the structures that we already have here that, that we can hang our, this, this thing that we're building on. So number one, I think for me, the game changer was, um, no, let me wait, let me save game changer. I knew going into this project that our superintendent at the time was working on creating this strategic plan with a mission and a vision and the four strategic pillars. So I, I knew that that, that thing, whatever it was gonna be, uh, when it, when it was start, first started rolling, I knew that's what we're gonna hang our hat on. Because the PLC can sustain itself, but it needs this undergirding that our district was gonna provide for us in the creation of the strategic plan. We also have an amazing district leadership team. Our meetings at the principal level, clearly you can see there's a year-long agenda. It communicates a clear and unified message across the district. I too get from my, from my team and my leaders that we are not being unintentional. This work is very intentional. I get that from Heather, I get that from Julie, I get that from Amy, you know, I get it from my fellow principals, like we're, we're all going somewhere together. Um, the other thing that I loved our district did this year is that we created that, uh, the district-wide um, professional development Wednesday where every teacher, teacher leader, every principal is either delivering the same message or getting the same message. I really appreciated that. Um, the district support with the across-the-board Hey Tutors, the Alivo and, and support of our social emotional programs. Some of us have different social emotional programs, but the fact that our district, our district was willing to support that is huge. Um, and also I think for, for me and for my team, the game changer, truly the game changer, was when our district set K two goals. I mean, talk about being able to hang your hat on something. Our PLC immediately, when we saw what the district goals were, K two, we're like, this is it. This is, this is our what, you know, this is, this is what we're gonna aim for. And then, so we had our what, and then our district gives us this gift of establishing this relationship with this organization called CORE. Uh, every single teacher in the district, every single principal in the district gets trained on this, this thing about the science of reading and the reading rope. And for the first time in my career, I know the difference from phonics and phonemic awareness. You know, it took a long time, but it's, it was just the complete game changing uh, for me and for our PLC. The work that our district um, has done in the last two years and then our, our growth as well. What's next? Is this our last slide? Um, and so that's, that's us. It's been a, it's been a, I don't wanna say rough, it's been a tumultuous three years. It was not easy. Um, but when I saw this quote, it, it really thought, it really made me think of, of us and, and our staff. And I'm gonna read it to you. So it says, "One misconception about highly successful cultures is that they are happy and lighthearted places," right? This is mostly not the case. They are energized and engaged, but at their core, their members are orientated less around achieving happiness than, they're less orientated around achieving happiness than around solving hard problems together. And that's us. In a nutshell, we may not be happy, but you know what? Put us in the room and we will solve hard problems. And that's our presentation. Thank you.
Don't, don't go away.
Don't go away, right? I tried.
Dr. Young?
It's a wonderful program.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now, let's get down to your um, data. When you implemented this program, you had a baseline. How has it increased the ability of the children to do math, reading?
I mean, so, so to be honest, we haven't seen the, we haven't seen, the data isn't showing the growth that we'd like to see yet. Um, but it's gonna, it, it's gonna take a while, you know, um. I think the piece that, that I'm kind of hopeful is, wi- with the setting of the goals, you know, at the K two level, you know, we are showing our kindergarten, we only have the one class. But you know, our kindergarten class is on, on pace to meet all goals and exceed them. So right now, while state test and NWA isn't showing the growth that we'd like to see, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, that maybe this is our year.
Feel that there's something else missing in the process? That would make sure that you see some type of um, progress?
Like a big bump. Um, I, you know, I, I can't, I can't say. Um, you know, we're, we're a small school. There's only one teacher per each grade level. Um, I don't know what effect that has on data that we're so small. Um, but you know, I'm, you know, I, I, all I can do is hope. And I don't know that there's anything missing.
When we started the project, they did tell us, my bad. I tried. I tried to get it without the microphone. When we started the project, they did tell us that there will not be a substantial, huge growth the first couple of years. They warned us of that. Because we are rebuilding everything that we have done from kindergarten up. So right now, the kids that started in the program are now kindergarten, first, second grade. And so they're getting there. I can tell you just from my own class from last year to this year, I have seen growth. And the amount of kids that are leaving my classroom able to read. So to me, that is showing some, some substantial numbers. Is it where I hope they are? Absolutely not. But am I seeing that light at the end of the tunnel? Am I seeing their growth? Absolutely.
Um, I guess my concern is that it needs to be seen in a different light. Um, I mean, validate yours, but we still need to see it in a different light. Um, where it, it is validated universal. That's what we live around, the universe. Um, but um, I validate what, what you guys are doing. It's an excellent program. But um, the results are not reflecting like you, you said, like you want it to be. And what, like we should be able to see it on data.
I teach fifth grade at Federal Terrace, and I'm sorry if I cry. That's why I don't speak up here. Um, because this is very, ooh, personal for me. Um, but we are, we are seeing, sorry.
Take a deep breath.
Yeah. So we are really seeing growth. Um, maybe not in the scores, like moving kids into the on grade low, into the greens and blues and things like that. Where we're seeing the growth is in the red. We're seeing those kids who NWA says are only gonna make six points of growth and they're making twenty-five, sorry. Forty points of growth at a time and still not making it out of the red, cause it's not possible in one jump. Um. So where we're seeing the most effect is with those kids that need to make up those foundational skills. Um, so it may not show up in the data that you see on your graphs and things like that. But when you look at the individual kids, you see, you see their little graphs, you see them, and then they jump. And over these last couple of years, and you know, like, the last two years, we didn't have fourth grade teacher at all. So those kids were stagnant, but then they come to fifth grade and all of a sudden, they were so deep in the red, that, that jump is insane. They still can't make it out of the red yet, cause it's just not realistic. In that amount of time going from fall to winter, um, you can't expect a kid to make entire massive grade levels worth of growth in just a few months. But you do see, um, growth that NWA doesn't even predict is possible.
So you, you second?
I'm sorry, fifth?
Fifth.
Yeah, okay, so, I guess the marker is when they enter into the second grade, are, do you improvement in their reading ability? That's what we're looking for.
Absolutely. So um, in, in my fifth grade classroom and across all of upper grade, we've identified uh, the students who have um, really deep academic gaps. And we have started tier three intervention. We use uh, Hey Tutors to teach phonics, to get those kids that are many grade levels below, as caught up as possible. Um, with our students who are closer uh, to grade level, we are doing um, very specific uh, fluency instruction. We are using the, uh, we're using decoding. We're doing decoding lessons like they are doing in K two, but using the fifth grade curriculum to uh, teach phonics and syllabication in upper grade, tying that in with fluency. Um, and this is daily practice, um, to bring everyone up to that fluent reading level.
With all of that you're doing, must be an ingredient somewhere. You guys need to find that ingredient somewhere.
Yeah.
Not pushing them over.
Yeah, I mean, we're definitely a work in progress and, you know, we've really been focused on closing those, the deep gaps. And one of the things that we're looking at in the future is how are we gonna support the kids that are almost there? How are we gonna push them over the line?
And if I could interject, interject real quick, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. But kindergarten, and I don't, I don't know, is your kinder teacher here?
No.
Okay. Well, shout out to your kindergarten teacher, because in the middle of the year assessment, ninety-two percent of those kids in that class knew all their letter names. Which is huge, because that's gonna, that's starting, right? That's at the beginning levels and we need them if we're gonna build them up. So when they become your fifth graders, they're at that point. And you can verify that for me, that's a number I have.
No, that's, that's right. And you know, the, the thing about the whole Solution Tree approach, you have to remember what Katie said was that w- we took where we were as a site, and, and remember, we, we had to build ourselves back, right? Uh, the six essential school cultural characteristics. I mean, we took time out of what we were doing to build that, to build a shared mission, vision, values and goals. We created collaborative teams that are focused on learning. You know, we have a nurturing or orientation at our site, right? We, we encourage collective inquiry. So a lot of the training that we received was around building that cultural, building our cultural capacity so that we do move for together, together as a cohesive group with collective commitments. Uh, so it's, you know, it's unfortunate that we are rated and weighted based on our NWA and based on state test, because that's not all we are. You know, it's, we, we are not just a state test that kids take on one independent day in May or April. Uh, we're, we're, we're more than that, you know, and what we've built, you know, is, is, is huge. It's huge and the, I, I mean, I can't tell you the mind-bending, uh, soul searching that had to happen, especially mid-second year. Um, you know, when you're being told by outside people that what you're doing isn't good enough. You know, that what your district offering you is not good enough. You know, the pushback that we had to give to these nationally known and recognized coaches. You know, it was not easy. It was not easy. And we had to build ourselves back um, in the vision of where our district is going, because at the end of the day, that's who I work for. I make the choice, we make the choice to work for Vallejo City Unified. You know, cause together, we're gonna make it a magnet district. And um, one day, you know, the, the scores will show it. You know, but it's not, it's not, it's not for a couple of years. So hang in there with us.
Rusty Flores?
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Sure, sure.
And I think I understand what you're saying and what the process is. So it'll be interesting to see what the scores for the second graders and third graders will be on this go-round. And it's exciting to hear the, the upper grades, cause they didn't have any of this prior, right? So they're being caught on a much wider catch-up scale, right? So, we all want to see those scores go up. And, and I do wanna acknowledge though, what, what you said, I think it's very important that all our students aren't just a, a test score or, or what, you know, so that, that, that hit me right here when you said that. But um, a couple of questions for you. But, um, a couple of questions for you, um, the, the little bit I know about solution tree and, and what I've asked about. Um, a lot of it, my understanding is like collaboration based. And do you feel that it's a little challenging where you're collaborating through multiple grades? Versus multiple first grade teachers or, or second grade teachers? Does, does that make it a little more challenging for you?
That's a great question, I'm gonna have our teacher leader address that.
Um, it is, so there are kind of two things going on. It's more challenging because through collaboration, you can share the, the effort. You can share, um, you can share the work. So we don't have four fifth grade teachers, so, you know, it all. Building the assessments and, um, making instructional decisions. It falls on one teacher's shoulders. Um, but on the other hand, there, being collaborated in a vertical team, the, the, the standards build on one another. And you can use similar instructional strategies across all of the grades. Um, and it's also given our teachers and myself the opportunity to really learn deeply. Um, about the California State Standards. So I was a fourth grade teacher. When I was in the classroom, I looked at the fourth grade standards, that's where I lived. I never went up to fifth grade, I never looked down to third grade. But because our vertical, because we collaborate vertically. Um, it, it basically forces the teachers at Federal Terrace and myself to look across the grades. So it's been a really, um, deep learning opportunity.
I- is this something that you, you all can collaborate with on your learning days, on your professional days? With teachers from other sites, I, I'm not sure if it is, but, you know, is that something that can be done?
It can be, definitely, because, you know, two of the four questions, um, are around what do we do when students. Aren't learning it yet, and then what do we do to extend learning for students who have? So when we have the op, when, when we have the opportunity to collaborate across the district. That's when those really deep conversations about, you know, my, I, I'm really struggling with. Um, having, you know, my students just aren't getting adding and subtracting multiple digits. Um, what have you tried? So that is a really great opportunity to really, you know, to learn from our colleagues across Vallejo.
Then just one more, um, question I had. Um, you'd mentioned that you had outside folks kinda giving a little bit of push. And you, you said something, and if, if I misunderstood, um, I apologize. But, uh, you were saying that they were telling you the district wasn't providing.
Yes.
Enough or what? Um, can you, can you clarify for me? Because i- if it, if it's something that this side is needing to step up more. Yeah, let, let us know.
So one of the things that Solution Tree brought to us, and it wasn't one coach, it was more than one coach, was that. You don't teach, the idea of you don't teach curriculum, you teach standards. And so, you know, we have, you see, you teach essential standards. And so the thought was, well, we must have bought, I think the thought of the coaches from Solution Tree was. Well, the reason we, they brought us to Federal, to Vallejo is because they don't have adopted curriculum. I don't know what it was, but we were told off the bat, go look for your curriculum, you know, create these units, write these standards-based units. And look for curriculum, go here, go there, um, buy this, buy that. Um, and, and you know, and, and we were given permission to do so. Uh, and we kinda started going down that, that road of, okay, so we're given permission to think outside of the box, to. Um, to gather our own curriculum or resources. Um, but it became, it was too, it was, we're, we're singletons, there's only one teacher in fifth grade. And there's only one teacher in third grade, and there wasn't a teacher in fourth grade. So it was, it was a lot of work attempting to create our own curriculum. Um, when, when as a district, we have amazing curriculum, right? So the pushback that, that we gave was, no, we are not going to, we're not gonna do that. We are not going to look for resources when we have amazing district stuff. Um, and I, and that's, that happened middle of second, second year where. Um, where we, I, I, I just completely pushed back and said, no, we're, we are going to remain faithful to the, the curriculum that we have. And we know that what we have is amazing, our math resources especially are amazing, our E L A is amazing, we had the support of Core going on, so. And you know, with the support of district leadership, you know, we, we all just kinda pushed back on our Solution Tree coaches and said, no, we're gonna continue the work. The essential standards live in everything that we have as a district. So it was just dispelling that misnomer amongst, um, Solution Tree coaches that Vallejo didn't have the resources necessary. We have everything we need in this district. So that, that went away quickly.
Mm-hmm.
So there, there's, we, we have everything we need and more.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Of course, of course.
And again, thank you for inspiring.
Oh, you're, thank you.
Vice President Amboye?
Again, thank you for your presentation. Um, I've watched Solution Tree, um, start at Federal Terrace for, when I first became, uh, my trustee. And to see where you're, where you were at then and to where you are at now. It's, it's, I'm enjoying this, uh, from, from this side of the, of the, of the dias, I'm enjoying to see the growth. And the passion that all your teachers and your staff from, from, from your custodian to your. Um, to site safety, it's, everyone has that one mindset. And, and I appreciate all your hard work. And I would hope, and I would like, and, and again, we would like to see the data, you know, in.
Me too.
In, in time, and we know the data will, will be there. Um, be patient, um. Whatever we can do on this side to fill in the gaps, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you.
Rustine Simmons?
Um, sorry, guys, I'm unwell. Um, most of my questions were, um, answered already, so I'll leave with like a statement. Um, I'm really proud of how Federal Terrace is doing. Um, Ms. Delamater, you talked about how the assessment tests only like predicted them jumping six points, but they jumped twenty to forty points. That means a lot to me because it shows that the P L C is working. Um, I remember my third grade year at Federal Terrace, I didn't have a teacher for, well, I had a teacher, but he left. Um, I didn't have a teacher for a while, and going into a fourth grade year with Ms. Hinton. She really tried, um, her best to support us in our education learning because we were a little bit behind. I would like to admit that, we were a little bit behind, but she really, um, supported us. And I'm glad to hear about your P L, P L C, and I do see the future of it. I see the future of like Federal Terrace being very bright, and I look forward to hopefully seeing like in the next year or two. It's showing up on, um, the data.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, actually, I do have a question, what is Alevo?
Alevo is a.
Oh, Alevo, sorry.
Uh, I'm, hopefully I do it justice, but basically it's, uh, an organization where they send out these, I call them kids, but they're coaches. They're young people, and, uh, basically we principals kinda, they come educated in, uh, how to, P E. And organized sports and, uh, at different S E L type, um, strategies. And so for example, at Federal Terrace, we have two Alevo coaches, and they're both very young people, uh, but highly capable. Uh, they lead games during recess, um, for the upper grade kids that don't wanna play games. You know, they'll lead like circles and they'll just, they'll talk and have conversations. Uh, they're there really just to engage kids in, in physical fitness and just mental well-being kind of things. And I mean, we had very capable coaches this year, you know, and sometimes, and they're young kids, you know? So, you know, sometimes it works and, and this, for us at Federal Terrace, we got super lucky, and we had very capable coaches from Alevo.
Um, that's great, thank you so much.
Sure, of course.
Dr. Young?
Well, I, I'm impressed with the, with, with this. Um, what most impresses me with this package. That, um, they have a process that you guys are being followed for the last three years.
Three years, mm-hmm.
Years. Um, and it's, it's cut and dried.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you know, it's, it's rocket science right here, the question is, what do we want each student to learn? How will we know, we're used to it, and then it tells you, takes you through the process. My question is, this is your third, and you consider it still a pilot?
It's not a pilot, no, this is us, this is, I think it's, it, it's us, this is us, we built this. I mean, they built it, I just kinda happened to be in the room when they were building it. Um, and when I say they, I mean the teachers. Uh, it's not a pilot, it is, it is ours. Um, we have this book, it's called Learn by Doing, it's kind of the, it's the Richard DeForre, Rebecca DeForre book, like the Bible. And issues will, will come up. And the way we solve problems, the way we go about doing things. Year one, yes, I was on the phone, you know, Dr. Keating, what do I do now? This is happening, right? Um, year two, I was like, huh, let me take a, let me try to do this on our own. And now it's, okay, let's go to the book, open the book, what should we do next? You know, so I don't think it's a pilot, I, I don't consider it a pilot, I really do think it's, it's, I know, I don't think, I know, it's, it's us. We're, we're running the P L C, May second is our last, last ever coaching visit with, uh, Janelle Keating. And I mean, a lot of what we've done this year, it's, it's us, this, this, this is no longer a pilot, this is a P L C at Federal Terrace.
Okay, in saying that, I guess what I'm saying is, when you gonna take your show on the road? To the rest of the district? I mean, these are things that teachers need to know how the process works in order for the program to be working. In order for these kids to be learning. It's, it's plain and simple, it's, it's no rocket science need to be done up right there. This needs to be, um, shared, um, in a P D C moment, professional development moment. Um, with the rest of the teachers, and they also need to buy into it.
Agreed. 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 Uh, you know, I'm gonna tell you that. I, I, I'm lucky, I, I'm a very lucky principal, uh, I've been around for, for forever. Um, and the culture at Federal Terrace is one where this was gonna work. Um, every single one of my teachers. It, it, let me, let me just tell you this, so when Janelle Keating, our lead coach, comes on, first day, day one, Marissa, what, what's the culture like on this staff, on this staff? I'm like, mm, they're all good kids, they're all, they're all good people, uh, they're all right, right? Uh, but her, her number, one question to me behind closed doors with just me was. What kind of pushback are you gonna get from which teachers, union-wise? And right off on the bat, I said zero, I'm gonna get zero pushback. Um, and I wish I could report to you that I got zero pushback from teachers on the staff, union-wise. But what, can I say ninety-nine point nine percent? Ninety-nine point nine percent of our staff, from the custodian to the lunch lady, to the yard supervisors. To my teachers are on this with me. There is a lot of work that is outside of what the contract says a teacher should do, that, that my, these teachers are doing. And they're doing it for our students. Um, and each one of them could probably grieve me for maybe a couple of things. You know, but they make the choice not to because they know that in the end, they're in this for our students. You know, so I wish I could tell you I got zero pushback, but there was some pushback. Um, very little, very minor, and that's not gonna stop us. I don't know that the situ, I don't know that that situation is present at every site. You know, it could, it takes a lot of buy-in, and it takes a lot of putting our students and your mission ahead of yourself. And so that's, that's all I have to say about that, as Forrest said. So anyway.
Um. Dr. Young? For myself, uh, thank you very much for your presentation and a great learning journey. One of my questions was how much longer, but I think you said in May next month is the end of.
The project.
The coaches, so, um, and then you have it, you already built it, like you said, it's, you own it, it's yours. And you're just gonna keep going forward with what you've learned on your journey. Um, so that was my first question, but it was just answered. The next one, Katie, I really enjoyed when you talked about, um, the aligned standards at each grade level. Because when you look at the state standards, especially the key standards, they're so wordy. And there's so many multiple tiers just within the standard, it's like, okay, am I looking at this, am I looking at this, or, or do I expect that? So it's like, where am I focusing? And when you have, for you, you said first grade, correct?
Correct.
So when you know where the kindergartners, what they, key standards are, and what you're, that you expect them to come in on. And then when your second grade teachers know what they expect you to cover and where they should take off from, that is very powerful.
Extremely powerful.
Can you tell more about the, because to me, I wish I had that, and I don't have that.
Um. You know, it's, it's so embedded in our collaboration, like we just kind of, and I'm, I'm doing a horrible disservice to my team, I, I am. Um, there's three of us, we get together, we're gonna talk about this is what it is. So for example, beginning of the year, we all started with place value. That's just kinda where we chose to start. Um, my place value was from up to a hundred. So we had the strategies and I knew what I was doing, and I've gone through the standards, and I've pulled out everything, and we did that with, um, our math coach, Scott Curran. And kindergarten teacher did the same thing, second grade teacher did the same exact thing. What was the same about it is we were all doing the same thing, even though it was just at different numbers. And so we were able to talk about, well, this strategy worked for me. And this strategy worked for these kids last year because those second graders were mine last year. You know, I didn't try that strategy, maybe you will have better luck with this. My kinder teacher was able to tell me, hey, you know what, I was using this language last year, you're using this language? Maybe that's why they're not getting it. And I never would have thought about that if I wasn't able to meet up with them. Um, I could tell my second grade teacher that, hey, you know what? My kids did really well when they were working with their ten frames and they were able to draw them out. Maybe you using blocks is what's confusing them. Think, the, the little things like that, that we really kinda take for granted, that's what's making the big difference. And having that time and having my team that just, we work really well together. And it's made a huge difference. And I, like I said, I'm just, I'm doing a disservice to them because. Learning progressions, thank you, see, that's why we have a team. And building our learning progressions, and this is where we're gonna start, this is our next step, this is our next step. And we go from the bottom up to the top. And each grade level has that, and we are able to see what the learning progression is from each grade level and how it is similar. K through two is much similar, three, five, three, four, five, six. Very similar, they do have some discrepancies when it gets to like sixth grade math that, don't, please don't ask me anything about it because I won't be able to do it for you. But, um, it's, it's neat to see those progressions and look, and able to look ahead and be like, oh, you know what, my, this is why. I need to make sure that my kids know place value up to a hundred twenty. Because if they don't know it, they're gonna have a really hard time talking about numbers up to a thousand in second grade. And then they're not gonna be able to do their multiplication facts and addition in third grade. And it all, see, you know. And it all just builds on top of one another. And so just having that conversation weekly is a game changer.
Last question, um, thank you so much for your explanation. Um, how do you work with the D O K levels within?
So with us, our essential standard is making sure that our kids are able to read, so I'm not gonna lie, that's been our focus. It's not that we have forgotten and left behind the D O K, but our major E L A focus this time of year. Has been making sure that those kids are able to read. So we've been have, relying a lot on the U Fly program along with the, um, six-step phonics lesson, that's what my kinder teacher this year is using. Now that the end of the year is coming, it's kinda fun to see that the kids are now able to read. And so they're able to take that information, they're able to ask those questions, and they're not just the surface level questions. They themselves are asking those D O K two and question, two and three questions. Because they don't have to focus on necessarily the reading and the sounding out. They're able to get into the content and ask questions like, well, why, why are the roots growing down in a tree? Why, why, why are they doing that, or why do they grow across? They're able to do that deep thinking on theirselves, by themselves, and we're just able to guide them. Support as needed, but that to me is where that D O K part is coming in. By the time they get to third and fourth grade, that critical thinking is already set in motion, they already have those skills.
Can I add on to that?
No.
Sorry. Um, one of the kind of shifts in thinking that one of the coaches brought to us, um, our math coach, Scott Curran. kind of shifts in thinking that one of the coaches brought to us, um, our math coach, Scott Curran, was level-up thinking. So a student solves a problem. They show it, they show it to their teacher, and the teacher asks, show me another way. And then finally, okay, they show him another way. Why does, why do those two, um, strategies work? So that simple shift in thinking away from explaining to questioning, um, where it just automatically addresses the, um, depth of knowledge, the deeper depth of knowledge in math. Um, and then in language arts, just thinking about DOK, as a teacher leader, I'm able to plan with, um, teachers and guide them. Our, our district resources are filled with, um, DOK two and three questions. So as the teacher leader, I'm able to support teachers in identifying what questions to ask teacher, um, to, what questions to ask their students that are right there in the district resource.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Federal Terrace. We're really appreciate hearing your journey and your success.
I believe we're ready for Jesse Bethel. All right, Jesse Bethel. Who, who's coming up?
Good afternoon. I'm Christina Carter. One of the vice principals is Jesse, at Jesse Bethel, and I'm gonna thank you guys for inviting us here today. Um, I'm gonna spend a few minutes talking about our CTE courses, and then I am going to turn it over to nine of our students that we have here today to, um, share a little bit with you guys about their experiences that they've had at Jesse Bethel, and specifically in the CTE courses that they are currently taking. Okay, let's speak on this first slide here. Um, one of the reasons why we chose to invite our students here is because we feel like the students that we have here, as well as many of our other students on our campus exemplify where we want our students to be upon graduation from VCUSD. Um, these students are learners. They are engaged. They are great communicators. Um, and we want them to be able to show you guys that, rather than us telling you, show you for themselves. Um, I do have a video embedded here. Um, and so you guys have that. I'm gonna leave that for you guys to, to take a look at. Um, it is talking overall about a student's experience, um, experiences, and how she feels that she's developing, but we also have her here in person to speak, so I'm not gonna play the video. I'm gonna let the video speak for itself. Um, and then she can speak to you guys directly, so, but that video is in there for you guys. Um, Law Academy, we have that Jesse Bethel, uh, was started in two thousand thirteen. Um, it is still going strong, and we are, um, looking to continue with that program far into the future. Um, it is an opportunity for students to learn about law, um, learn about career pathways in law. Um, in the program, uh, I will actually leave a lot of it to you guys to talk about. Uh, but they do expose the students. They have activities for them. They take them on field trips, um, all to get them just engaged around exploring law as a career. Um, again, I have a video here. If we have time at the end, and, you know, if you guys want me to play it, I will. But these videos are for you guys to take a look at, and again, I think the students are gonna speak to what's in the video, so we'll let them speak to that. Uh, we also have, um, junior ROTC, and we have representatives here. You guys saw some example of these wonderful students coming in and presenting the flags and presenting the colors. And I will say to you guys, it is not a show just for you guys. They are like this every single time you see them. They are on point. They know exactly what they're doing, and they are student-led. The events that they have, um, their instructors tell them what they need to do, but allow them to run their own events, and they do a fantastic job with that. So what you see is the program. It's the program every time you see them. Um, so, uh, but the purpose is to build character, uh, to build their leadership skills, uh, to give them the opportunity to explore, um, career, um, physical. I know there's tests and things like that that they do. Um, that's all part of the fr-, the framework of the program, and again, they will speak on, on that. Biomed, um, we do have a biomed, uh, department, um, small department. Um, we have it. We're hoping to grow it. Um, it's a very popular course at the school. Um, students really enjoy the class. They really enjoy the instructor that we have. Um, again, they're learning about career, career pathways. Um, they learn about the human body, body functions. Um, it's a hands-on course. They do a lot of, um, projects, a lot of experiments. Um, it's not a lecture-take-nots type of class. Students are engaged in hands-on learning and collaborating, um, as they learn, um, through this program. Um, and I think this is the last slide that I have. Um, Jesse Bethel had recently, last week, last week, they had, uh, SAT School Day, which is really just the SAT but held during the school day. Uh, which is important because we did not have that. We didn't have it last year for sure. Um, but it's an important opportunity for us to be able to really encourage our students to take the SAT, um, test. It's an opportunity for us to show, um, that we feel it's important and that we can support students in this important step as they're looking towards, moving towards, um, applying for colleges. Um, so that's all that I have here. And again, I have the students here, so I'm gonna let the students come up and talk, and then, um, then I can come back up if you guys have any questions for me. Um, I think we're starting with, we're starting with, okay. We're starting with, uh, J, in JROTC. So you guys come on up?
Good evening, everyone. Um, bear with me. This is my first time speaking in anything like this. Um, I'm Leah Seville. I'm a student at Jesse Bethel High School, and I'm a platoon commander and the armed drill commander in the Navy Junior ROTC program. And before high school, I was that kid that was shy, scared to make friends, and ironically speak in front of a lot of people. But after three years in the program, um, I learned how to branch out of my comfort zone. And without this program, I don't think I would have been able to participate in the things that I have in this program. We go to field trips, and with the guidance of our instructors, they help us explore careers outside of the military. Um, they help us explore colleges, um, scholarships, what kind of scholarships, and how to apply for them, and just other jobs outside of high school and college. Um, to a lot of people outside of this program, it seems scary or intimidating, and they think that we're all robots when we're around school. But, and to me and to a lot of the students and cadets in this program, it means a lot to us 'cause it really helped us guide, um, each other through high school. And without this program, I wouldn't have the courage to be up here and talk to all of you guys. So, thank you. If you don't have any questions, I would like to pass it on to the next student.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Good evening. Um, I'm Cadet Petty Officer, Third Class, Will Sergeant. Um, I'm a junior at Jesse Bethel High School and a Naval Science III Cadet. Um, so, um, JRC has taught me a bunch of skills that are very important, um, to the real world. Um, attention to detail, um, what else do I have written down? Um, disciplined, um, I hold myself to a higher standard. You know, wearing the uniform, I have to hold myself to this high standard in order to ensure that the standard is met. Um, I, um, am interested in pursuing the military career field afterwards. Um, I went, I attended Griffin Academy, um, for my middle school, and for a long time, I knew I wanted to commission into the Navy as an officer. Um, I had no idea how to do it, no one to really mentor me or guide me, um, until Chief one day kind of just, you know, recruited me into the program, and now I have a very strong idea of what to do. Um, in fact, um, leading my aspirations high enough for me to want to attend the United States Staple Academy, uh, which is apparently a really prestigious, um, institution. Um, and, um, this has actually been working out for me. Um, I have been accepted, uh, this year to the Naval Academy Summer Seminar, where I'll be able to attend Naval Academy for a week and get a feel for the academic rigors and the physical rigors that are included at the Naval Academy. So, thank you. Thank you for your time, everybody, and I'm gonna pass it on to the next cadet.
Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Delani Pavijo. I'm the Cadet Lieutenant Commander of Jaguar Company at Jesse Bethel. Um, I just wanna say really quick before I get started, let's give these cadets a round of applause for coming up and speaking. Um, and that's really what NJOTC is about, uh, building cadets up, building, you know, taking freshmen, or really any grade that they come in, you know, building a better person. Uh, citizenship, citizenship development is our main goal in ROTC. We really wanna build good people, um, you know, develop them and their academics and, um, you know, make sure that they're prepared for life after high school. Um, ROTC is specifically important to me. Um, similar to like one of my fellow cadets, uh, I've wanted to always enlist in the United States Navy, um, which I'm pursuing, pursuing to do next year, um, as aviation boatswains may, uh, handling aircraft on a aircraft carrier. Um, sorry. Um, that's the, the gist of our program is to build cadets up to, um, that next level. Um, and just continuing on why, why it's important to me, I was, you know, offered a lot of opportunities through ROTC. I got my first job through ROTC. I'm a lifeguard at Cal Maritime, and, uh, I was, uh, introduced to that job through a field trip that we do, that we did. Um, we weren't able to go on that field trip this year, but, uh, it's something that we look forward to doing each year and, uh, part of the, some of the activities that we do. Um, another reason ROTC is important to me is because it, you know, like my other cadets, built me up into, you know, a strong person doing stuff like this. I know I'm a little nervous right now, but, um, you know, it really builds people up. Uh, one impactful thing that happened to me in ROTC was, uh, last year, actually, we had a incident in which a cadet had, uh, fallen ill, and we had to, um, resuscitate that cadet. And I was, you know, a part of that being a lifeguard, and, uh, doing that, I was able to earn the meritorious achievement ribbon, which is the highest ribbon that you're able to achieve in NJOTC, and just, you know, being in that situation and being able to handle myself really shows how NJOTC can build someone up to, you know, to that level. Um, I wanna speak just to some of the specifics of our program and, uh, what we do, not necessarily on a day-to-day, but what our goal is for, um, the entire school year. Uh, like the, uh, previous cadets mentioned, we're very heavy on scholarships. Uh, Captain Ordolano, you know, uh, he's really hard on us for, you know, applying to those scholarships, making sure that we meet those deadlines, take the SAT, take the ACT, all those very important things in our high school career that, you know, a lot of, you know, normal students might overlook. I know Principal Carter, Vice Principal Carter, excuse me, um, told you guys that we had our first SAT day. Uh, in my four years of being at Bethel, there was no, uh, pre-ACT, pre-SAT, no SAT, anything like that. And, um, ROTC was actually able to help me prepare to take my ACT. Um, we have an entire library of, you know, prep materials, test materials, whether it's the ACT, um, SAT ASVAB. Students have those resources available to prepare themselves and make sure that they're ready to pass those tests and apply to scholarships and get into the colleges that they, um, wanna get into. Uh, we have a lot of career pathways and community service opportunities. Um, ROTC is not just a, you know, a flow into the military. We're not, you know, getting you ready to go into the military where there's that option. Um, there's a lot of other career pathways, whether that's, you know, getting your Merchant Marine credential, uh, trade opportunities, working in healthcare. Um, there's a lot of different ways that you're able to advance yourself and succeed after high school. Um, another core part of our program is our, uh, special teams. Outside of our normal, um, platoon day, our one, we have four platoons, uh, throughout the six periods throughout the day, but there's also our after-school program, and that's where, you know, our top cadets can really excel in different teams that we have. We have a color guard team, uh, our former cadet over there, she's our, uh, drill team commander. We have academic team. We have multiple STEM teams, um, who work with, uh, coding, Blender, different, you know, softwares like that to really advance their, uh, experience as a student at Jesse Bethel. And it's not really offered, um, anywhere else, any sort of after-school program like that, that really enriches cadets and brings them to that next level. Um, moving on to some of the events that we were able to do this year, events and field trips. Uh, we have our annual cruise on the USS Potomac, and we visit the, uh, coast, Coast Guard Base in, uh, Alameda. Uh, that, um, vessel used to be President Roosevelt's former, uh, yacht, and each year, we, um, students have the opportunity to ride out on that. We go out through the bay, and they're, uh, able to, you know, if they've never been on a boat before, have that opportunity, as well as earn their, uh, sea cruise ribbon. Uh, we also, for the first time in, I believe, four year, or five years since, uh, COVID, we went to basic leadership training, and, uh, we're very thankful for that, uh, the, uh, school board and our, uh, school administrators for allowing us to go on that overnight field trip. Um, it's very, you know, an essential thing that cadets have that training and are able to participate in those overnight field trips. It's a really crucial part to NJOTC. Um, and another thing that sets us apart from other programs within NJOTC is that we have a lot of summer programs. Uh, we have our Leadership Academy, which is similar to BLT, where cadets, you know, go out and they really advance their leadership skills. It's actually out of state, and, um, it's a really big, uh, on taking one of our color guard cadets. She's not here tonight, but she went to that, and, uh, I can just see her growth from that program. We also have, uh, Thousand Oaks and Boys and Girls State, which are more citizenship development. Thousand Oaks is in, uh, Southern California. Um, it's a leadership academy where cadets work with, uh, other NJOTC units to really just build their leadership skills, communication, all those key points to being a good leader. Uh, Boys and Girls State is similar to that, but rather than, you know, just learning leadership, they actually play roles within like a city government, whether it's mayor, council members, uh, district attorney, you know, different things like that to advance their worldly knowledge and their, um, leadership. We also have, um, through the United States Naval Corps of Engineering, there's a science and engineering program. Uh, myself, I did apply to that. I unfortunately didn't get in, but it's a program where, you know, high school students have the opportunity to work in labs all across the United States in different, um, biotechnical, um, fields, whether it's chemistry, bioengineering, um, aviation, different stuff like that. Um, it's just a summer program that we have available that, uh, a lot of students apply to. We also have our Flight Academy, which is, uh, again, through the Navy, where students have the opportunity to actually earn their private pilot's license over the summer. It's an eight, uh, eight-week course. And, uh, again, it takes place at multiple different, uh, campuses around the United States. Uh, we also have career technical educational certifications. Myself and my executive officer are currently pursuing our FAA drone license. Um, you know, with that, we'd be able to get jobs at PG&E or other various companies that use, uh, drones for like aerial, um, mapping and whatnot. Uh, we also have our Merchant Marine credential, which cadets are able to earn through either going through Cal Maritime or the Kings Point Merchant Mariner, um, Academy. But we have a lot of different, uh, career opportunities that, uh, students are able to take advantage of. Um, I believe currently Jesse Bethel is going through like a big facilities overhaul with the, uh, building of a track and multiple different like, um, PE facilities. We'd also like to see that for the NJOTC side as well, not just within the sports department or, you know, other departments when this, within the school. But right now in our classroom, it's, it's pretty packed, and these cadets can speak to it and agree that, um, we have a pretty packed classroom. Other ROTCs, or the way our classroom is laid out, I guess I should start with, is we have our main classroom learning area. We have a supply room where we keep all of our uniforms, and, uh, we have other, we have our changing room, and we have a back staff room. And it's just really cramped in there, and what a lot of schools have is their supply room is actually up on a loft, um, which is something that we'd like to see in the future, of course, with the board and the district's help, but as well as fundraising. We'd like to add a second story to our classroom. Um, we'd also like to see, uh, lockers, uh, within our, uh, classroom just so that, that's another incentive for cadets to join. You know, you get a locker. Uh, I'm not sure when it happened, but, uh, Jesse Bethel used to have lockers, but then they were removed for, um, lunch pavilions, and, um, you know, talking to a lot of my peers, I know that's something that they wish they had, a place to keep their stuff. Um, something else that we're also looking for is weightlifting equipment. Um, we're currently restricted to what was left from the sports department, the stuff that they didn't want, and it's somewhat adequate, but, you know, it's stuff that we also, or there's- And it's somewhat adequate, but, you know, it's stuff that we also, or there's other things like bench presses and, you know, proper working ellipticals or treadmills, for example, that we need to truly advance our cadets' physical standards. As well as going back to our changing rooms. Currently, our changing rooms are sort of makeshift. I know Cadet Sergeant, being another male cadet here with me, our male changing room is made up of partitions. It's not permanent. Our female changing room is a little bit better. A former cadet's family actually donated that to us. But, you know, that's a facility that we're, is almost, you know, necessary for cadets to have the proper privacy when changing into their uniforms or their PT uniforms when needed. And that's another thing that we're looking for. And my final thing that I have here is an indoor air rifle range. I forgot to mention it, but one of our special teams is a marksmanship team. And, you know, beyond all the rest of our teams, that team, you know, really excels and really pushes themselves to be the best, you know, make those standards and then be the best shot. One of our cadets, our captain actually, is a second national ranked shooter for his age group. So, and I also have a marksmanship cadet here with me. She won a medal at a competition for best freshman shooter. She was the best shot in the entire competition. And, you know, we just, we, these cadets take that activity really, really seriously. And we're looking for a more permanent solution to when we want to shoot. Because currently cadets have to take all the equipment to our bike rack. That's what we're using for our shooting facility right now. We're asking for a proper shooting facility and there are grants available from the NRA. And I know that might sound a little, you know, uneasy, a school grant from the NRA. But this is something that cadets really, really take seriously and it's more than just, you know, shooting guns. It's, you know, trigger control, your breathing, muscle control. It's really something that cadets could take into a collegiate sport or into the Olympics. And some of the risk management concerns that we have is transportation. Currently, I'm not sure, I'm not too clear on the exact policies of VCSD transportation, but I know that we're limited to specific hours within the day for pickup and drop-off. And if we want to go outside of those hours, we're, we have to rent a charter bus, which costs $3,000. And that's a big expenditure for us in NJROTC. So if there's any way like with the district that we're able to work out something that can solve that issue so that we're not having to spend that big sum of money whenever we want to, whenever we want to do something outside of those operating hours of the VCSD buses. And then also vans. A lot of other school districts have vans that students are able to use. I know we have a big bus fleet, but vans for like small groups like this, color guards. We have a color guard events all over the county, whether it's for Six Flags or up at the county building. And cadets can't always rely on their parents because they're at work, so, you know, small vans like that, so where they're not having to rent out an entire bus for those sorts of activities. And with that, I just want to say thank you for your time and thank you for hearing my presentation. If there's any questions.
Dr. Young?
Thank you for your presentation. I mean, I got lost somewhere along the line. You have so much to offer in your program. It's just amazing. How many seniors do you have graduating this year?
Currently, we have eight. Eight seniors, yeah. Next year, we're planning, we're projected to have eighteen. Eighteen, yeah.
Okay. And as far as building a loft?
Yes.
That's, that's a vision. Thank you very much. That's a vision.
Um, I'm not sure. I know there's other NJROTC units that do have that in there, within their building. And with the size of our classroom, I do believe that it would be something that we could, you know, take on.
Building a loft, maybe giving you some additional space, yes.
It's something, whatever we can take, whatever we can take.
Yeah, I'm sure the additional space could be invited, but the loft, no. Thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. I thought it was interesting. Both of you apologized for not being, for your speaking. But yet you both did, to me, an exceptional job. And once you relaxed, you did, you did wonderful. And you just, you, what you explained, everything was very clear, very precise. And I also liked how you advocated for things that you need. That is important. Because if we, we wouldn't know. And the community also, there's ways not, through the community or others. So advocating for your needs to be more successful within your program, I think that's incredible. And I really, I like that. And through your life, you're gonna need to do that wherever you go. So I'm glad you're doing it now. And that will help for the future generations, for the students that are coming up next.
Absolutely.
So, thank you so much for being here and just giving the examples. Like I wouldn't have thought about, I know we have transportation, but when you gave the specific examples, then it's more tangible, oh, that need could probably be met. Or maybe not a loft, but an extra room, because there's extra space, something. So there's ways to meet needs, maybe not exactly the way another facility does it, but yet to find the way to address them. You have a wonderful program. I'm excited for all of you. And I loved hearing about the different awards all of you get for helping and throughout the community and how you go throughout the Bay Area and even the United States to learn skills. And like you said, it's not maybe going into the Navy, but you have all these other options. Having options is so important because you don't know where life's gonna direct you or guide you. So, I really appreciate you're all here and I want to hear your voice and hopefully you'll come back and we'll hear your voice again through this incredible program.
Thank you.
Our next speakers, is it the Law Academy or Bio, which?
Real quick, President Fox, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, trustee Flores.
No worries. Thank you for your presentation. It definitely shows what your program is doing. But I think this is more of a comment geared towards Superintendent Relio. I think if I heard correctly, that their changing facilities are subpar at best. And I think that's something, if nothing else, that's something that needs to be addressed ASAP because there's so many.
Liability issues.
Yeah. If nothing else, that, that needs to be addressed ASAP. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Board, and I hope you guys learned a lot.
BioMed, thank you.
Hello, I'm Isaiah Jones with the BioMed Department. I'm just here to share my experiences in the program with the rest of y'all. So for BioMed, I really, personally, I really struggle with just someone telling me what to do and how to do it. I'm more of a really hands-on kind of person when it comes to learning. And I feel like the BioMed program has helped me a lot as we do a lot of activities and have a lot of field trips where we actually do the things that we're learning about and we're exposed to the things that we might want to do or like pursue in the future. So, yeah, I'm just gonna pass it on.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Priscilla Williams. I'm a senior at Jesse Bethel High School. And yeah, just to piggyback off of what Isaiah said, BioMed is a really hands-on class. I want to pursue a career in the medical field and so I'm going to UCLA to major in human biology and I thank it all to this class. Thank you. It's, it really taught me just different pathways I can take. Like you don't have to go straight to just becoming a doctor, becoming a nurse, or so many other things that the medical field has to offer. And just for a specific example, I have an internship right now at Toro University where I get to shadow different health professionals. And when I go there and I get to see what the medical professionals are teaching their college students, it's actual real-life stuff that we've already learned in class, like the ear test, testing your air conduction versus your bone conduction, or how to properly apply an IV, or how to take a person's blood pressure, or even how to talk to patients. When, you know, you have to do a formal presentation, you have to explain to them step by step on what you're doing. BioMed has already prepared that for us. So, it's kind of just given like kids an insight into what careers in the medical field look like and if they can handle it, if they have the patience for it. And just, our teacher, he's Mr. Risto, he can be here today, but he's really, really, really patient with us. And we just can dissect the topic we're learning on day by day. And I think all the kids, since it's a three-year program, we've all become like a family. And it makes it really easier for the labs and stuff that we do because everyone is so comfortable with each other. And our teacher is really prominent on making us all comfortable with the stuff that we're doing. And I think it just really helped me become confident that I want to pursue biology and I want to become a pediatrician in the future. So, yeah, we just really love the BioMed program. I can't stress it enough. I am going to Six Flags next weekend to talk with the eighth graders and try to persuade them to join BioMed when they come to Bethel next year. It's just an amazing program and I owe all my thanks to Mr. Risto in this department. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Dr. Young?
That insight, thank you. Thank you for that insight of the program. Now, my question is, in the program, do you have any partnerships like Kaiser, Sutter, Rela? That you experience?
So, the Toro, Toro University actually comes to our class every Monday. And we have this thing called the Peer Health Promoter Program. I've been a part of it since I was a sophomore. But they basically come in and we work on, I guess, community issues. So, right now, we're doing, we're going to hold a symposium at school and it's held by Toro. And each group is broken up and then the Toro, they're actual students from Toro University, they come and they help us with their problems. So my group is focusing on domestic violence in Solano County. And we get to like look at real data, real statistics, make a presentation on it. And then we get to present at the symposium, which is coming up next month. But Toro University, they actually come in and they do a lot of presentation on internships. That's how I got mine, through Kaiser too, and through a lot of scholarships. I think Toro is one of our most prominent partners, but throughout my experience, I don't think any other companies have come in to speak to us. It's usually Toro or Solano Community College. Just a lot of colleges to get kids to know that there's other resources like available around Solano County.
Are you a senior?
Yes.
What is your vision?
My vision for me, myself? So, in the fall, I'm gonna go to UCLA. I'm gonna major in human biology. And then I hope to go to medical school at Duke. That's my dream. We'll see how it goes. But I hope to become a pediatrician or a neonatologist to work with the kids at the NICU.
And young man?
For me, I'm going to San Jose and my dream is to become a kinesiologist, mostly because back in the, I used to play basketball and then I hurt myself. Let me move this mic up a little bit. Sorry about that. But I hurt myself and it seemed like a really good job and a really fun job and I can't imagine myself doing anything else. So, that's what I want to do. Or that's what I envision for myself.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much for talking about the program and we're very excited for both of you, for your future.
Thank you.
Come back to Vallejo.
Okay, I will.
We are next gonna hear from the Law Academy, is that correct? All right.
Hi, my name is Dominic and I'm part of the Jesse Bethel Law Academy. And one thing that I experienced in Law Academy was I got to like speak with a lot of people in the Law Academy. And it helped me because I couldn't really like talk with people a lot because I was like nervous and stuff like that. And, like, it motivated me to like make more friends and I have more classes with people in it. And so, we get to talk a lot in the same classes and experience a lot together. And an impact it did for me was, like, have a lot of like communications with people and talk with a lot of same people. That's it.
Oh, let me move this back down. Hi, I'm Aleah Ly from Jesse Bethel Law Academy. We're here to talk about my experiences in Law Academy. And I think one of the most important things in Law Academy is the teachers. They're really supportive. And if any questions, sorry, I'm really nervous. With any questions, they'll help you. I've had a lot of support. I didn't, when I transferred, when I was a sophomore to Law Academy, I didn't know anything. And this has been a good experience. It made me take interest in the, the, in the way with law and what kind of different law enforcement roles that you can have interest in. I'm sorry, but that's all.
Hi, I'm Lily. I'm a junior and I'm in the Law Academy at Jesse Bethel. I think, well, I've known about the Law Academy since I was a freshman and I joined as a sophomore. A lot of my sisters like participated in a lot of it, so I got to like see them and what they did with it. And they didn't really take it like serious at first. And I think for me, something that like really brought to my attention from it was the mentor sessions that we just had. So, it was like a whole bunch of different people. A law isn't just, you don't just have to go into, like be a lawyer or it will like prepare you for other paths too. Like you could go be a police officer or go into like the firefighter academy. It's all offered actually in the front of it, like when we were getting the packets as like described to what we could do from here. One of my mentors actually went out of his way and got me a card from, I forgot his name. I'm not gonna remember his name off the top of my head. But, because I want to, I want to go into family law when I'm older. And I might possibly be able to intern with the person that was at the mentor sessions with this, I guess. But I think something also about the Law Academy that is probably one of another, one of another really good things is the, it's, it's gotta be our restorative justice too. And that's something that a lot of the law teachers have worked on with Ms. Ina and Ms. Chang. It's like if, on campus, if there's like issues with students, we can kind of use that to like help students instead of them just focusing on it with staff. It's more of a student-led group. But it also prepares us for many other things. And Ms. Chang actually is, she helps us out a lot with that. But I'm gonna pass it on to Shailo.
Kind of to add a little bit more information with Lily and the mentor sessions we've had. I, my mentor was a dispatcher and a police officer in Vallejo, a Mr. Sergeant Hollis. He's taught me a lot and shared a lot of his experiences and like, it showed me and made me realize what kind of different jobs and experiences people have with, and made me kind of take interest in law enforcement. But, yeah, that's all I kind of had to say. Oh, pass it to Shailo now.
Hello, my name is Shailo. I am a junior at Jesse Bethel High School. Some things about me are I'm also part of the general TC and I'm also a tennis player. I think the Law Academy is important because even though a person may not specifically want to go into that career, it's definitely a good program because it offers so many different things for so many different careers. Also because, picking back off what they said, we have mentors who come from different professions before the legal career. And some of those professions may interest people, particularly for me, like my friend says Sergeant Hollis used to be in the Air Force. So, it, him being in the Air Force did motivate me to switch mentors and have him as a mentor and dive more into his experiences and what made him go from being in the Air Force to now being in the legal career as an officer. It's also really important to me because it expands from not only just the Law Academy, but it gives you different experiences on different cases. You get the opportunity to go into different courtrooms and sit while they do presentations. And we also, like she said, we have the U. Um, and we also, like she said, we have the youth injustice, which we basically, uh, or restorative justice, where we basically get to help kids, um, who are having more troubling times and, uh, maybe fitting in, getting along with other people, uh, teachers. And we try to talk to them, um, as students normally because we've noticed that they have a different reaction to when an adult is speaking to them than a student. Um, so, yeah. And then, um, sorry, lastly, um, I'd say it had a huge impact on my life, uh, the Law Academy because it's expanded my, um, my thoughts on careers, um, just knowing that there's many different things that you can do. You can pursue, um, many different ways that you can go and also the, uh, resources that it has helped given me for different careers as well. Um, and, yeah, it's just impacted me really well. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing to add, uh, when we're talking about students and staff. I wanna say my freshman year, my mom got sick and had cancer, you know, and she ended up passing away. But because of my teachers and my peers that I have met through the Law Academy, it made like, uh, it made a huge difference, it's like in my life. Like I didn't really believe that I actually had people that I could lean on like at school until I came to like Ms. Chang or Ms. Johnson, one of my favorite teachers on campus, no offense to anybody, but she's a, uh, she's our forensics teacher. I've actually had her since my freshman year, biology. And that's another, that's another path that, you know, she kinda walks us through is forensics. But I wanna say that the support from them is what makes me want to get up and come to school every day. And it also, not only just from them, but from Ms., uh, Ms. Carter and the principal and all the other vice principals too. They make a big difference in our, like in our wanting to learn from them, I guess.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, we keep going back and forth.
Don't be sorry, it's okay.
I had another thing to add about our field trips. Our field trips are very educational. We have actually went to many different colleges like UC Berkeley, UC Davis. And we've also, um, went to Sacramento State Capitol and we did a tour. We made, we, we met, uh, one of the state senators and I just thought it was like a really interesting time. I also shared with my teacher, Ms. Chang, that, um, I think it's like a really beautiful like pathway. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned about the mentors and the field trips and how you get connected through community and helps you see other way, other avenues or other things maybe you didn't see before to reconnect or be in another area, two areas that actually have connections. So, thank you for sharing that. We have a light, um, Dr. Young?
Yeah, thank you for sharing. Um, the Law Academy is, is very dear to my heart. I happen to sit on the board. But the bottom line is, um, you guys are having a Law Academy Symposium, June twenty-one? At, um, it's, it's gonna be held at the Santa Clara, uh, University, uh, Law. And I, I said, news flash that I just got that I'd like to share with the, it says the Annual California Law Academy Symposium. It's June twenty-first, uh, Santa Clara University School of Law. And, um, and at this particular Symposium, Jesse Bethel has, the Jesse Bethel Law Academy will be receiving the Premier Law Academy Award.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That's actually, um, a news flash to us also. But, um, I think we've had like a lot on our plate. We're focusing on mock trials. We're doing pre-run mock trials right now as of this week, actually. And if you guys have any further questions.
How are the mock trials going?
Oh, they're going, they're going really good. Um, I'm actually, one of my roles is a lead attorney. And, uh, it's, I wouldn't say it's like, it's something I've never experienced before, but, uh, something I've definitely learned from. Uh, yeah.
Thank you. We have, oh, go ahead.
Thinking about mock trials, I will say it's, uh, completely different from the one that we did last year.
Is that good or bad?
Uh, it's in between, kinda.
In between, just different. Okay. One of your peers would like to ask you a question or say something. Trustee Simmons.
Hi, y'all. Um, good evening. I'm sick. I'm so sorry, guys. Um, thank you for all of your presentations. I did have questions, but I wanted to wait until all the presentations were over to ask them. But man, go Jags, am I right? You know, Jaguars beat Bluebirds or Red Hawks? Okay. Before I, um, ask my questions, I already thanked you, but I wanna thank you guys again so much for speaking in front of all of us. Um, when you guys all started, it was a really crowded room and I know how hard it can be to, um, speak in front of a lot of people. Um, it was so interesting to hear about all of the pathways like Law Academy and NJO TC that I'm not in because I take Biomed. But, um, I want everyone to know that Jesse Bethel really is a community, like, um, Law Academy talked about the restorative justice program. I didn't know about it until maybe two weeks ago and it really does help people that are not in the program. It's a really good program. And as you heard, we have so many great opportunities at Jesse Bethel and in our programs. I'm glad we were able to come here and express the needs within the programs as NJO DC, um, expressed. And to my questions now, I hope all the academies is here, Biomed, NJO DC, Law. Biomed's gone? Oh, I'll answer the questions then. Um, my first question was for all of the programs was one, what's your favorite thing about the program you're in? And two, what's one thing you've learnt in your program that you don't think you could've learnt anywhere else? I'll answer first since I have the mic. Thank you. Um, in Biomed, since, no, I'm sorry. In Biomed, um, I wanna go and become a neuroscientist. And, um, in Biomed, I've learnt a lot about what Priscilla said, um, how to talk to patients. I've had lots of opportunities with the peer health program, no, the public health program at Toro University to meet with people in the career path. Well, not necessarily neuroscience. I haven't met any neuroscientists yet. But in like different medical positions that I could possibly be in and I think that is really cool. And I don't think I would've learned how to do, well, I don't know what other, um, academies do, but I don't think I would've learned how to like draw blood or like do blood pressure and almost get my veins pop off at other, um, programs. Yeah, thank you. Oh, sorry, guys. My questions were one, what's your favorite thing about the program you're in? And two, what's one thing you've learnt in your program that you don't think you could've learnt in any other program?
Um, one of my favorite things is that we can all come together and communicate. Um, this, actually this Law Academy has improved my communication skills like this right now, my public speaking. It's, uh, been a very big improvement, actually. And, um, one thing is, uh, that I've learned, if I wouldn't have been in this academy, is how, um, interrogations work, how, uh, your Miranda rights and, um, learning about, um, um, all that.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question one more time?
I'm sorry. What's your favorite thing about the program you're in? And?
Oh, okay. Well, my favorite thing about the program, I'd say, well, because I'm in between both, I'd say it's the skills that you acquire in both. Um, they're very, very useful, especially in real life, um, not just in the classroom, uh, with other people, um, with officers and whoever you come in and encounter with. And then I'd say something I think I couldn't have learned in anywhere else is probably the leadership that you build because I've made such a deep connection with also my commanding officer and the people in Law Academy. It was very easy for me to, uh, find a place where I could, you know, reflect what they were teaching me and, uh, take all the advantages that they offered, so.
Um, as for my favorite thing about ROTC, it just absolutely has to be the cadets, you know? From a more senior standpoint, being able to, you know, manage a hundred cadets and know a different hun- know a hundred different people and their story, why they're in, in our, in your ROTC, that's just my favorite thing, you know? Getting to interact with the cadets, lead the cadets and ultimately build them to be better students. So, yeah.
Oh, yeah, what's one thing you learned in your program that you don't think you could've learnt anywhere else?
Um, I'd have to say probably commanding a hundred and a hundred people at once, you know? I think that's something not most people have the opportunity to do at the age of seventeen. Um, being in charge of a hundred different people and all their different departments and jobs. I think it's, you know, something that I wouldn't have been able to gain anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Go Jags, man.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of our student presenters. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse Bethel.
Absolutely, absolutely. Do you guys have anything else? Okay.
Thank you. Have a good evening. We are now down to our forum. Do we have any inter-agencies reports?
I believe we have Soul Trans.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is B.C. Abraham. I am the Innovation and Technology Manager at Soul Trans. Thank you for that. If you could all take out your phones, scan that QR code and I'll tell you why. We are in the midst of a complete system redesign, which we more formally refer to as a comprehensive operational analysis or COA. We are in the phase of the COA where we are requesting and actively receiving public feedback, comments and anything at all that you wanna tell us about the draft designs. It is crucial that we hear from the key demographics, like all of you. That's why I'm here tonight instead of at home with my dog on my couch. But that's okay. And we want all kinds of feedback. I want to be very, very clear. We hear this all the time. You only want to do this performatively. That is not true. We actively want your feedback, good back and the ugly. We hear it all. I have flyers available as well. I can pass them out in the back or leave them there for you. Um, it will summarize what we're looking at doing for the draft changes. In addition, I wanted to provide a brief synopsis of the key details of the COA. The primary objective of the COA is to improve transit service for the community. Specifically, the goal is to make the system faster. People want to get to where they're going and they don't want to have the inefficiencies that come with public transportation. We understand that. They also want it to be more reliable, more efficient and to maximize, well, at least we want it to maximize our existing resources. Secondly, Soul Trans has no new funding. That should not shock anybody. Everyone's tightening their purse strings. And as a result, um, we are not able to do some of the things we wish we could with the post-pandemic travel demands that we're seeing. In a perfect world, the one where money grows on trees, we would. To that end, this redesign is however, going to have a net neutral budget in mind. And so, when you're looking at these concepts, understand that we had to plan with what we have and we are going to have to reallocate existing resources. Third, you will see seven key elements amongst the system draft designs. On the local side, so local talking about our local routes within the cities, um, you will see an improvement in frequency. You will see, uh, re- a reduction in waiting times for our busiest routes. You will see that folks are able to make their trips faster and, and more conveniently so you don't have to have the decision fatigue of having to plan ahead and, and you just kinda know that the next bus is coming and you just go outside. We will also have better timing at the Vallejo Transit Center so that there isn't wait times there as well. Right now, we're seeing folks waiting anywhere from fifteen to thirty minutes on our good days, just waiting for their next bus because they have to take more than one bus to get to where they're going. You will also see enhanced weekend service and operating hours throughout the week. So, you'll see earlier start of service on Saturdays, later evening service throughout the entire week and Sunday service on all routes. If any of you are familiar with the current Soul Trans system, that is huge. Our Monday through Sunday does not look like that right now. And so, effectively, the bus service would become a consistent service you can depend on Monday through Sunday. On the express side of the house, you will see elements, so express being those bigger buses that you see on the highways going outside of the county. You will see an investment in high-demand routes, improvement in travel within the county to other cities within the county, not just Vallejo and Benicia that we primarily serve. And it will also address reliability and connectivity concerns. Now, I did say seven elements and for those of you that were counting, that's only six. I know, I, I got you. Um, and the seventh element that is probably the biggest element that you will see in both draft designs is trade-off. I mentioned the net neutral budget. So, for all six elements, all those good things I talked about and made you really happy and excited about, yeah, well, there's a trade-off. We have to take resources that we have, buses, operators, hours, costs, and take them from elsewhere in the system and apply them to these elements to make them happen. This means merging routes, discontinuing service in certain low-usage corridors. And regardless, we want to hear from everyone on these draft designs to help us feel better that, you know, it's a hard decision, but you have our backs or you don't have our backs. Mind you, we've already had significant feedback in certain areas that, um, we've already made revisions and we will bring back draft concepts to the public, um, for all the revisions that we're going to receive based on the comments. We will adjust accordingly essentially. We are taking feedback until May fifteenth. That is our May board meeting. All are welcome to come. It's a public open forum. Even if you do not scan the QR code or do not talk to me personally or anyone you see at Soul Trans, um, that public hearing is a great forum to you to, uh, verbally provide feedback as well. You are more than welcome to submit feedback as many times as you would like. We don't limit people to one. And we will then, um, close our public comment period at that board meeting. So, with that, I will stop and take any questions that you have.
Jorgez?
Thank you for being here.
Of course.
But, uh, I, I, I know you're looking for feedback from the community and whatnot, but what priority does Soul Trans have in regards to routes that are gonna service our schools or students? You know, i- is that always a priority in mind or, or where, where does that fit?
Serving the schools is always a priority, uh, particularly the school tripper for Vallejo, the thirty-eight is likely not changing. We, our bread and butter for the school trippers is making sure that the kids get to school on time, period. There is no ifs, ands or buts about that. Should there be any realignment? Should there be any changes to bus schedules? We will, that we always have come to the, to the schools to discuss it with them to make sure that we are doing exactly as I said. In terms of the more general, uh, public routes in the local area that also serve the schools, um, there are some areas where we will realign it. But as it is right now, every school is going to be served, every school that exists.
My understanding also is that students right now can ride free?
That is correct. All youth ride free regardless of where they're going. They could be going to the mall. They could be going to jobs. They could be going to internships. That pilot is, uh, scheduled to technically end, um, but we're going to our board to extend it even further. We have seen a six-hundred-and-one percent increase in youth ridership just March over March. Not to talk about the entire youth ridership over the course of the year. So, we started the pilot last April.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As you Simmons.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your presentation. Sorry again. I keep saying this, but I'm sick. Um, so I'm gonna be talking a little lower than I usually do during the meetings. Um, Soul Trans is really helpful.
Thank you. They're louder for my boss.
For the students in Vallejo, I know lots of my peers take the bus and we take advantage of the free. Um, students ride free. Um, Soul Trans is also really good at communicating. I know when I used to live in South Vallejo around Lemon Street, there was an issue when when the pilot, the free um. Student ride pilot came, they didn't really come to my bus stop. And so I called, I was like, hey, guys, I'm sitting here, but like. The bus isn't coming. You guys were like, oh my god, what? You guys sent a bus here. You guys even put like a. Bus stop, like an actual bus stop with the chairs and the trash can there. And um. I really like how you guys, I don't know if you're necessarily partnered with them, but the app called Transit. That app has saved me so much and I just want to let you know that we do appreciate, like as students, we do appreciate. Soul Trans and what they do for us.
Very welcome. That would be part of the Innovation and Technology Management Department. You're welcome.
Um, is it true that Route Eight might be discontinued?
Yes, and the portions of the Route Eight as it is aligned right now, so. Within the survey, you'll see the actual layout of the map. It's going to be assigned to other routes, so that. While we are discontinuing it, it you really should think of it as a merger, if you will. Um, the only portions of the Route Eight that we will no longer serve is the Southern um Glencoe Community. We are looking at other ways to provide service to the Southern Glencoe Community. But providing a full forty foot bus for an average of less than two people. Isn't really cost effective.
What about the stop by Safeway? Will that one, instead of the whole route up the that area, just just the Safeway route? Uh, the stop, I mean.
You know what's really funny? I work in transit, but I am directionally challenged.
It's at Robles and um.
Yes, I know it's at Robles and Safeway, but I actually have to pull them out.
I didn't know if that part would be continued and the rest of it would be discontinued or not.
So.
At least people can walk to that area and still get.
Yeah, the new Route Three will stop at the corner of Fulton and Old Glencoe. And so it just passes that Safeway, so yes, it'll still stop at Safeway.
The ones from upper farther up can walk down and still catch, they just have to walk some.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I add one, one thing? I was at a session at Jesse Bethel with the mayor. Mayor was there listening to our s- our seniors. And I do recall hearing when they were asking about things that needed improvement in Vallejo City. Is frequency of buses, especially during the mornings when our kids are commuting to school and getting up there, so. That might be something, I know that our students do appreciate the buses, but sometimes the cadence and frequency.
Yes, and this um, in the transit world, we we tend to think about. What is the optimal number that is most frequent that gets people not considering. How early they have to plan ahead and a- and on average, that's about fifteen minutes. Um, if you know that in fifteen minutes another bus is coming, you go about your day.
Thank you for being here.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna drop these in the back. Thank you guys. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Now we are down to um, is V E A here for a report?
I don't see V E A for a report.
C S E A.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Um, for members, EC members, community members. My name is Elizabeth C. I belong to C S E A. Um, I know our, one of our members was here last week giving you all the updates, so I don't really have much um to say. Cause it's only a week, right? But um, I know they give you a safety day for our retirees. Uh, now we have the actual invitation. Well, I will pass out. I hope to see some of you um in that event to support. Um, you know, the people that are being putting a lot of hours for our students in the district. Last year, uh trustee Flores was um one of our um guests and and I hope to see more of you there. Also, I just want to see how refreshing it is to hear our students coming to the podium and speaking. Um, the eloquence that they have, the valor to stand over here in this microphone. It's it's nerve wracking sometimes, so. I am very impressed and very happy as a as a mother of former students of the district. Um, with that being said, I want to give a quick update in the scholarship that we are giving to our students. So the deadline closed on Friday. Uh, we have twelve participants, so we will be giving the names um in May. Um, seeing all the students in here, it's uh like I said, very refreshing and we are gonna work harder as as a C S E A. Hopefully to bring more scholarships for next year. And hopefully we'll give more advanced notice to the parents also. Cause I think that's important for us to know, so we can pressure our kids to get those scholarships. Well, that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm gonna pass this up.
Yes, please. They brought the scholarships coming. Please relay that to the your your board. We appreciate you being here. Is V S M A here? Okay, no report. Uh, District Advisory Committee?
Uh, no reports for District Advisory Committee.
Members?
Yes, we do have a community member, Ms. Hazel Wilson. Please come to the podium.
Good evening. As the city talks um about um. The shipbuilding coming back, I hope that um the district might um. Find a relationship between the Engineering Academy at Vallejo High School. Um, with shi- the shipbuilding industry. Um, uh. The Engineering Academy has completed a project that I'm v- very, very impressed with. So um, I think that whenever our students can have an opportunity. To join in with something with this, with the uh city, it's very good. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And trustee will take that back, right? All right. Any other community members? Okay. Student reports. Imorales.
Okay, so for my student report, good evening, everyone. So I just want to start off by talking about a, an event we had in March. Called the Generational Wealth Event by Travis Travis Credit Union. And basically over um, to summarize what this event was about, it was about educating the students on the four pillars of financial wellness. Providing an immersive experience that gives teens and young adults a practical financial reality check. So in our workshop, we participated on assigned and assigned in occupations and salary, student loan debt and credit score. They navigated through the simulation, making budgets deci- decisions about wants, needs and responsibilities. Learning valuable financial tips along the way. So next, I just want to talk about start, um, Vallejo High School started doing morning announcements. Um, after coming back from spring break, I came up with the idea of starting to do morning announcements. And we have three students doing that, including myself from the leadership class. And um, I think these, I think the announcements are going smoothly. Um, since we've started building up, we've only done three a week. So we don't do it daily. We do it, we try to do at least three a week. And um, since we just started, we don't have much information to go on. So we try to balance the information that we get in the in the beginning, like to the end. So we do um Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. So we just try to balance out the information we got through those days and what we, what we would like to see as like um. An intercom slash microphone such like, such as like this, because. Right now, when we do the present or the intercom presentations or um announcements, we use a telephone as the microphone. And um, I've sometimes I believe, or today, I wasn't the one doing the the announcements. It was my um. My um leadership friends that were doing it. And it it's, it sounded a little um. Quiet and a little raspy when they were speaking and um it was the speaker, I believe. And I just feel like the um, like a good, a good microphone such as this one would be a better idea for that. And also by doing this, I spoke to a teacher that um. That um helped me do a one on one on how to be a little slower when I talk on the intercom announcements. And it helped a lot. She to- she talked to me about how to just be confident in everything I say, go a little slower. And um, pour some Ricardo in it. Okay, um, next one is visit, next one I want to talk about is the visit from the medical ambulance from the medical careers class. So on April ninth, we had the Solano County Medical. Ambulance present to students what they do on a daily basis and how to, how to do CPR and also how to use an AED. When um, they showed us how to put a patient on the gurney as well. We also met Molly, their therapy dog. That helps those who may feel anxiety and stress in an emergency. In some of these pictures, I was able to demonstrate how to perform CPR. On a patient who is unconscious and not breathing while my uh, while my best friend puts the A D pads on the patient's chest. Overall, it was a great experience and potentially my job for a year or two to have a step into the medical pathway. Next thing was um, Mayor Source visiting Jesse Bethel to speak to the seniors. So on Monday, I was able to visit Jesse Bethel High School to meet and hear Mayor Source speak to seniors about. Who is she and what her visions are for the city of Vallejo. First, we spoke about what we were like, what we like about Vallejo and what we don't like about Vallejo. Next, we spoke about what the mayor does for the city of Vallejo, like what's her role and what's her job. And we also talked about the Vallejo representatives such as Congressman John Gueramendi and Christopher Callbendon, member of the California State Senate. Students were also given a chance to ask questions or given answers by the mayor. And after the presentation, I spoke to the mayor source about what I want for the people of Vallejo, which is to help those students who feel like they do not have a voice. Um, those do, those who don't feel confident in themselves and also about med- and also about the medical pathway. I also met the president of um N A double A and double A C P, Ms. Hunter and Ms. Mrs. Wilson. Who I spoke to asking about learning about what they can, what they do and as an organization. And how I want to contribute to the community in a positive way. Next would be um, meeting with Ms. Dilly for the Student Council, which will be happening tomorrow. Tomorrow and Thursday, the student, with student trustee Alasia, I and I are going to have a meeting with the other students who went to Washington DC with us. About the first ideas and plans for the Student Council. We want to happen, we are also going to attend the two by two meeting tomorrow, right after that meeting. Next, um Senior Decis- Decision Day by our counselors. It's an event that's happening on May first. We are going to have um our seniors' decisions where seniors will be presenting which university, college or community college they are going to in. August, I believe. Um, Justin's Organizations. Brought their caps and gowns for all seniors, which um they started on my day. We had the dressing organization um. Start selling the caps and gowns for, I believe, forty five dollars. So um, it's a great price in my opinion and. They're coming, they came Monday and they're coming back on Friday. And we, oh, we had our two week block schedule for eleventh graders doing their casp testing. And um, we are in our second week, so after this week, we're going back to regular schedule. And on April sixteenth, we had our annual Armed Force Day. Where every branch of the military came to the school and did activities in the quad during lunch with students who are interested in the military. And um, last thing, I just want to let everyone know that Vallejo High School had its prom event for juniors and seniors. The prom king and queen um was me and my girlfriend. And um, I just want to say overall, the night was amazing. And um, that's my report.
Go Ricardo. Get pictures? Okay, we have to see pictures.
I'll hit, I'll tape this off after uh trustee Alasia's presentation.
Simmons?
Is that payback because I dissed your school? Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Here is um some updates from, from my school and just the community in general. Um, as trustee Morales mentioned, we did have the mayor source come to my school and talk to our seniors. Um, the mayor also came to Vallejo High Campus, but um trustee Morales kind of missed that one, so he invaded my school. Um, it was a really exciting opportunity for our seniors to engage with mayor source though. Um, and discuss ish, discuss issues important to our community. Um, we also had prom this weekend. I didn't go. Um, it took place last Saturday and it was a really great success. Um, there, our leadership team. Spent a lot, a lot of weeks and month organizing this prom, so I'm really glad that it went well. Um, as trustee Morales said, tomorrow we do have an official, no, 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 no. We have a meeting with Ms. Dilly to talk about the Vallejo Youth City Council that we are creating. Um, I'm excited to finally begin working on this council and creating a vision of it. Cause that's what the meeting is for. We want to plan out step by step, like, okay, how's this gonna be run? Um, who do we want to be, not like who do we want to be on the council, but like just our vision for. The Vallejo City Youth Council. And I think this will end up being a great opportunity for students to be involved in in the future. I think it'll be a really great opportunity. Speaking of um, programs, another good program that is emerging is. I spoke about it before. I wanted to create a arts program in Vallejo. Um, I have to email Mr. Orlando who came and spoke with me. He also came to my school last week and I spoke with him more about it, but I'm finally moving forward in my plans of starting a like. Mental health arts program. And what I mean by arts isn't just painting. I mean like script writing, like playwriting, um, music. I want, I've heard so much um about Vallejo used to have a good history of being like a great arts. City and community and I don't see that anymore. And the mental health aspect of it is. Um, I asked some students at my school, like, why don't you go to the wellness room when you have issues? Um, or like, why don't you use some of the resources we have at school? And some of them are just like, there's a bad stigma against it. Um, like, I've heard things like, oh, well, they're mandated reporters. I can't trust them. Or et cetera, et cetera. I'd rather for it to be like anonymous or things like that. And I want to incorporate um like. Or partner with mental health like providers or mental health resources that students would want to. Take without the stigma that I've heard. So I've been talking a lot with a lot of students in my school about how. Like, how they would want their mental health to be addressed and so I can incorporate it within my program. Okay, ooh, I'm hot, guys. Um, at my school, we have auditions. We have an al- alma mater song and there's auditions for people to sing it and represent our school. And I'm not auditioning for that, cause I can't sing, guys. I'm just an actor. I can't sing. Track team update. Um, I'm proud to say that our track team now has access, regular access to um. The Corbus facility. Before, the track team could only go um once a week, but now. The track team can go four days or five days out of the week, so I'm really proud to say that. Um, although I do wish, I don't know how it would happen, but I do wish that we had our own track or like base or football field. Um, AP exams are coming up really soon. The AP teachers have began having like mock exams. I recently took my AP chemistry, one hour, thirty minute long, full length mock exam today. Um, but they've started doing after school and during lunch um exams and just review for students. Who are preparing to take the AP exam starting May, the first week of May. Um, Jesse Bethel, our band has been achieving a lot and you know, congratulations to them. They've been winning impressive awards at recent competitions and continue to make our school proud with their hard work and talent. Um, also in your ROTC, they're not here anymore, but their color guard have been winning lots of awards and going to lots of competitions. Really proud of them too. Okay, I wrote so much, guys. Um, I want to bring attention to something called tutor dot com. Um, so if you have a library card, you can go on tutor dot com, put in your library information. And they have different, like you can talk to a live tutor or you can um watch full length videos on whatever subject from kindergarten to college. They have calculus, they have math, they have A. They have calculus, they have math, they have AP chemistry. This is a really good resource that, um, I don't think most people know about, that I've been using for AP chemistry. So it's, um, tutor dot com and just put in your library card information. It's completely free. And, um, this, the tutor sessions are virtual. And I think they can go from like thirty minutes to two hours, which is really helpful. Also, um, I'm unsure if you heard, but a thing called the Ice Bucket Challenge is back. It's an, um, awareness trend that originally started to shed light on lupus, which used to be a non-curable disease, but now it's curable. And it came back, um, to bring awareness to mental health because there was a tragedy at USC. So lots of students are nominating each other for the Ice Bucket Challenge to, um, spread awareness. I'll be doing mine tomorrow cuz I got nominated unfortunately. Well, not unfortunately cuz I love spreading awareness on topics like this, but I'm feeling unwell. And I don't feel like having a bucket of ice dumped on me at whatever time I get home. Um, I'm sure my little sister will be happy to do that, though. Yeah, that, um, concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you both. I have a question for both of you, um. Trustee Morales, you talked about on the intercom that, uh, duh, cuz we're in the midst of CASP testing and you said it's a block schedule. Can you tell me, has there been any announcements or, um, what kind of encouragement or good attendance or participation or do your best or sleep, eat, whatever? What kind of things have you heard from your school, um, in regards to CASP testing for both schools?
Um, well, so when we do the announcements, we first start off by saying this, um, like, you know, just hello, this is my name. Stuff like that. But when we do the announcements, all we just talk about is how we're on block schedule. Um, we say good luck to all the juniors who are doing them, who are doing the CASP testing. But, um, other than that, we just, that's, that's about it.
Uh, nothing about attendance, please be here, try your best, get a good night's sleep, something?
No, but, um, thank you for that. We'll start doing that.
I think it's so important cuz it just helps, so especially the participation, making sure people taking the test and that they're tr- actually trying the best they can to show their knowledge.
Yeah, uh, thank you.
Whatever motivational things, I think that's a good avenue through the morning announcements. There anything happening to promote or for CASP testing?
Um, at my school, it's pretty much the same as trustee Morales. I know, um, when we were mentioning SATs and CASPs during our morning announcement, we do say good luck. And we do say like, um, what did they say? They were like kind of cheering on the students that did, were taking their SATs or their CASPs, but we don't have like any other messages like that. But it might be individual because, um, I know teachers at my school, um, they do like tell us at least, they do tell us like, oh, drink water, do your best. Um, but that, I've only seen that for like AP exams, AP teachers. And I don't know if it's all the teachers on campus, but I know some teachers do, like individually, not on the announcements, say things like that.
I've been to both of you to help with that motivational piece, the attendance really try. Thank you. All right, with that, we are now down to our consent items. We have consent for A through, um, S. Do I have a motion? Trustee Flores?
Motion to accept, uh, consent items for A through S.
Second, trust, uh, Vice President Amboy.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges is absent. Trustee Flores?
Aye.
Trustee Young?
Aye.
Vice President Amboy?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Our consent items are all approved, five zero, or seven, thank you unanimously. Uh, we are now down to information, agenda item five. A, presentation and public hearing of the charter school renewal petition for Vallejo Charter School. Do we first hear the card or do I introduce or what's the format?
So, we, we're gonna introduce Assistant Superintendent Tapasio. She'll introduce sort of the format and then, because it's a public, gonna lead to a public hearing and then you'll have the public hearing script.
Right, so good evening, uh, trustees, President Fox, Vice President Amboy, Student Trustees and Superintendent. Um, we are bringing before you information item for the, uh, Vallejo Charter School Renewal Petition, um, and this is a public hearing, so.
Thank you. We will now move into our five A, which is our, we are here to do that. This item is for information only and will be introduced by the petitioners following by the public hearing. The petition for renewal was submitted, just continue with, okay, was submitted to the district on February twentieth, twenty twenty-five and in accordance with California Educational Code. The board holding the presentation and public hearing within the legal required timeframe. If you wish to speak during the public hearing, please submit a yellow card, which we have one, um, before the end of the presentation by President, uh, Principal Lubin. I will now turn over to our principal, Janice Lubin, who will introduce the petition. So the public hearing is now started.
And Principal Lubin will join me and speak to their petition.
So thank you, thank you. Um, thank you for taking the time to respectfully, um, receive and complete the first reading of our charter petition renewal. Um, submitting this petition is a significant step and for our school and we are very, very grateful for the chance to share our vision for the future. Although this petition is only for, the petition is a two-year renewal. We believe that it lays out a solid plan for success for Vallejo Charter. Um, we have worked hard to design a petition that builds upon our successes, but it also addresses the areas that we need to work on. We've worked hard with our families, with our teachers, with district leaders, myself, to design this petition that we think will outline our goals, our strategies and how we plan to measure um, the success of, uh, of our school over time. Um, I look forward to the second reading at the next board meeting and actually defending and addressing some of the things that are in our petition. Um, and I thank you for your time, um, for the first read of the petition. Thank you.
This time, we will open the public hearing for any comments related to renewal of the petition for Le- Vallejo Charter School and we have
We have one ca- card, I think PJ Gonzalez.
Good evening.
Good evening, trustees, President Fox, uh, Vice President Amboy, Dr. Young and trustee Flores and our superintendent, uh, Arrelio and the rest of the district, uh, leader. Um, my name is PJ Gonzalez. I am the president of the Vallejo Charter Council. I am here to represent our school crew. I'm also a parent of two students that promoted out of VCS and a guardian of numerous former students that attended Vallejo Charter School. I am here tonight to support the renewal of the Charter Schools petition with collaboration between our crew along with Ms. Tapasio and her team. We worked many hours and drafted a petition that we are proud to present to the board. Our community strongly support the school's model of expeditionary learning. I have witnessed in the past that if the model is used with fidelity, it produces amazing results. It empowers all students to achieve excellent and equitable outcomes. We are aware that we are not where we need to be right now. But with your continued support along with the district, we can bring back the results that we were one, we were known for in the past. We need all the support you can provide to our principal during our move to the new site to implement the school's model through EL professional development designed to help our educators create classrooms where students can excel both academically and individually. I urge the board to please renew our charter, allowing our school to continue its important work in our community and to, to compete with the other charter schools in our city that's not district-dependent. I will be sharing with you through email the link to the EL, uh, education website. I encourage you to please read through it and sign up as a member to receive their monthly newsletter and discover about the wonderful collaborative work they do to help improve low-performing schools and districts throughout the country. One last thing, I advise you to please attend one of our leadership conferences to network with some of the school leaders from around the country and possibly get information on how to improve our schools. Thank you so much for your time.
You.
And I just wanna clarify, cuz, cuz Principal Lubin, I have a card for you. Did you wanna do a comment? Oh, that was part, okay, perfect. Thank you, just to clarify.
I wasn't sure if she needed to.
That concludes our comments. Thank you so much for those who spoke. Right now, I'm closing the public hearing. And as noted, the district is currently reviewing the petition and will return, which will return to the board with findings and a recommendation for a future meeting anticipated, um, next month in May. Includes this item. Thank you. Now we're on to, um, information item B. Mr. Tapasio?
Uh, yes, I bring before the board the, um, third quarterly report for the Williams settlement. And we are submitting the report to Solano County Office of Education with, um, one, uh, facilities complaint that is yet unresolved, but it is in process of resolution.
Thank you. Questions?
And?
We're on to, um, information C. State required reading, um, difficulties, risk screening instruction.
So for this item, I have a presentation. Um, so it is a requirement of the state of California that for, in, beginning in the year twenty-five, twenty-six that each district implement a, uh, reading difficulties risk screener. Um, and so Vallejo City Unified is no exception. We will be, um, adopting or implementing a reading difficulty screener starting in, in the fall. Um, we had opportunity to review four, um, of the, uh, state, uh, provided options. And, um, uh, of those, we have selected the one entitled multitudes. So it's the, the program, the tool will help support staff in identifying learning needs at the earliest grades and will be integrated into our current assessment systems. So how we came to this is in the fall and winter, members of the Ed Service Instructional Team reviewed each of the screeners for accessibility, language availability and cost. Uh, Solano County Office of Ed sponsored presentations from the eligible publishers. And then the team recommended that we move forward with multitudes. Um, this screener is developed by UCSF Dyslexia Center and the screener is available in English and Spanish for students in kindergarten, first and second grades. So in, in terms of implementation, district staff will first undergo preliminary training this spring. Um, and then students in grades kindergarten through second will be screened in twenty-five, twenty-six. We will utilize both, um, classroom teaching staff, but also supplemental staff, including, um, other members of the team to come and help assist in the screening of all students. We already do a lot of one-on-one assessment with our youngest students, so this will just be an additional layer. Um, it will require more staff time. Uh, regarding multitudes and some features of it, it was created by the University of California, San Francisco, UCSF. Um, it's a universal screening tool looking to identify learning challenges. As you know, there is no, like, just test for dyslexia, but we use the screener to identify risks um, and to determine interventions that will allow us to, um, uh, get ahead of reading challenges. And, um, there is no cost to s- to public schools in California using the UCSF model. Um, and that was one of the factors in selection, but not the only one. Um, as we know, we will also have to be, um, selecting a new ELA adoption at some point. So using the multitudes at this juncture makes the most sense given that at some point down the line, the screeners may be, um, uh, folded into, um, the next ELA adoption that we do. So we don't wanna make a double investment. Um, and this program meet, does meet all of our needs. So it does have a digital platform, um, and is currently in validation assessments with evaluation tests with over twelve thousand kindergarten, first and second graders across the state. Um, again, as I mentioned, it is in English and Spanish and is culturally linguist- linguistically responsive. And just as an overview, I'm just providing some of the, um, assessment, um, uh, m- mechanisms, um, in language, uh, phonological awareness, phonics, and, ooh, my eyes, and processing speed. Um, these are all key indicators for reading difficulty. Um, and, and so these are the elements that multitude applies at each grade levels. And I'll take any questions you have.
I'll start from someone who is dyslexic. Um, I know there was a vision test also that would help identify eyes that were not converging and diverging properly, that were working independently. There was, so I don't know if that's still available or?
So through the science of reading, we learn that, um, that dyslexia is a processing
Yes.
um, disorder and not necessarily a vision disorder.
Not vision, but just how the message are sent to the brains, if the eyes are diverging and converging properly and sending, if they're sending two messages instead of one message slowing down the, the person. Um, I know there was a test to see if the eyes were working independent or di- converging
Right. That would not be part of this.
It's a different approach.
It's, it's, yeah, that's a, that's a, um, um, probably more of a medical diagnostic.
You know that UC Berkeley, when they would come to the second graders at the school, um, in my district, that that would be part of the program and that they would identify and build a C right there with the second graders if there was something else going on that the parents in the school then would be notified.
Right.
Um, so that was very powerful with them. For this program, how long does it take and how does it, how the teachers, what supporter, like, how much is ea- how long does each assessment take? And what support do the teachers need or?
Uh, well, they will be provided support, additional, um, district level staff, teacher leaders, other, other staff will make sure that we get, support teachers in getting this done. Teachers already do some, um, their, their one-on-one assessments with each student which can take a few minutes to, you know, up, anywhere from a few minutes to ten minutes per kid. So this will add on to that, um, and we couldn't do it all in the same setting, right? So it's, it's in, it's a little bit of an extra round and it doesn't exactly test the same components as our core reading inventory that we do with each child. Um, and, and not, it doesn't assess them in the same way, so we do have to do both. Um, but because the students will do it in kinder, first and second, um, we're hoping to, um, just ensure that we've identified any child at risk. It does not, does not mean that they automatically have dyslexia. It doesn't mean any of that, but it might rise a few kids to the top of the list for additional diagnostic and additional, um, support.
Effective and tier checking.
Yeah.
Um, do we have in our, with our resource, um, teachers, do we have intervention that uses the dyslexic, that helps chi- um, children who do have dyslexia?
Yes, so that's for students who are, who, if, if students receive special education services, right? But dyslexia is not a qualifier for special education.
No, I know that. I mean, I, I know that different, just in the last year or two, that there's been programs and with resource teachers that have been using, that have been really helping students access curriculum better or help them with their reading or their spelling or their word identification.
Right, so a lot of the work that we're doing through the science of reading, um, while it's not a cure, you know, it, it, it does support students with dyslexia. Um, it's that time on, um, phonological awareness, um, practicing with, um, sound symbol um, connection, um, would, would, is gonna support many students, right? Um, and yes, um, our resource teachers do have some specialized, um, uh, curriculum that they use with students as well.
Trustee Young?
The, what is the track record of this? Do we have any statistical data that makes, that makes this? Do we have any statistical data that makes, that makes this better than any other one other than it's?
They're all new. No, that's not the only reason, but they're, it, it is the one backed by the state of California. It, the state of California invested in this tool, in the development of this tool. And so it wasn't just that, it was, that's just an added bonus. But this is the one that we did like the best, especially given where we are in our adoption cycle. The, this tool has, as I mentioned, has gone through validation with over 12,000 students in the state of California. They've been repeatedly testing the tool. And all of the tools are brand new, so none of them have a track record yet. None of them are vetted.
What specific, is it administered to all the students from K second?
K first and second will all receive the, yes.
Okay.
Every child in VCUSD in K one and two will receive the screening.
Okay.
Beginning in the fall.
Someone transfers in, they would still, any time of the year, they would still be on the list? Wonderful. Or even someone older, a different grade level, I would hope they would still be, if they never had the screening, hopefully that'll be a red flag too to check new, new people that come in.
And in May, I, I, we haven't gotten that, that far into the flow chart as far as when a new student who maybe arrives in third grade. Because we have other diagnostic tools that we use, right? When we're doing our reading inventories with kids. If we started a fluency and they're not proficient, then we come down to another level of assessment to figure out where the gaps are. So it, it may, I'll leave it to the instructional team as they test this tool to see what are the limits of it, whether or not it should go up to a higher grade or not.
Be interesting to hear how it's going as it's implemented.
Yes.
And I'm really appreciative of our governor, Gavin Newsom. He is dyslexic and he's very, he talks about it with others. And I'm glad that our state has put awareness to it the last few years.
Yes.
To help with it.
Yes, and it's, it's come out of some probably hard-fought battles around, you know, really coming to terms with the, the needs of our early readers, right? And it's part of, you know, I think it also comes out of the, the workaround, again, really pushing forward the science of reading and how children really do learn to read has been critical. And this is one piece that had, yes, to be addressed.
Yes, and the last thing I say is, for a lot of students that have some type of either dyslexic or something with a learning disability, sometimes their peaks and valleys are so great that the peaks, their survival on whatever areas those are, at least I know for myself, that's just, it's interesting when you find out for a student, those peaks and valleys, how they are able to adapt or survive without the help. And then when they get the help, you see how things change with, with instruction or with help.
Right.
So it's just fascinating, fascinating to watch the progression with help and where they are and where they go.
And one of the things I'm, I'm happy to say is, I've been in the trainings when we've, when it's been discussed, is that while, while, you know, all our teachers have, you know, a long way to go and all of us have a long way to go in understanding dyslexia, part of the professional learning we've been doing with Core has, in, in the science of reading, has had a lot of education around how to serve kids with dyslexia. And, and what is it, what is it and what isn't it, right? And, and so our teachers will have some basis to, to look at this data and decide how to serve their students.
Very much.
Thank you.
We're down now to action item, Agenda Item Six, Action Items A. Dr. Patrick?
Good evening, trustees, superintendent Aurelio, staff and community. I have our annual, two annual items before you that allow the business, the district to do business with regards to hiring teachers. And I'll start with the first, which is Item 6A, Declaration of Need for Qualified Teachers. Administrative Code Title V, Section 80026, Subsection E, specifies that school districts must certify if there is a need for fully qualified educators in specific subject areas. There are insufficient numbers of certificated persons who meets the district's specified employment criteria for positions listed below. And for the past several years, the Vallejo City Unified School District has had a need for fully qualified educators. The Declaration of Need allows the district to employ individuals on provisional interim permits, short-term staff permits, until fully credentialed teachers can be hired. For the 2526 school year, the district is anticipating a possible shortages in the following areas of special education. Foreign language, which would include Filipino, Spanish and French. Math, English, science, elementary school TK eight, middle school six through eight, and high school nine through 12. The Declaration of Need for, for fully qualified educators must be filed with the Commission on Teacher Credentialing prior to the start of the 2526 school year.
And this is an action item. Vice President Amboy?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Action Item 6A.
Dr. Young?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges is absent. Trustee Flores?
Aye.
Trustee Young?
Aye.
Vice President Amboy?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
This, in answer, in answer, thank you. We are now on Action Item 6B. Dr. Young, did you have something before we get to 6B?
Yeah, I have a question. Where does it come into play when we start hiring interns? Intern teachers?
Yes.
Where, where does the credentialing come into play there?
So typically, in order to meet intern status, most of our teachers will start off at the pre-intern level. You have to get into a program. You have to complete your specific subject matter classes. And then you have to pass your C sets or RECA to be intern compliant. Once that happens, then you qualify as, as an intern. But with this, the, the prior action that you just took, it allows for us to hire those folks and train them, to prepare them to become interns.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to, where, where is it? Okay, I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Patrick, now we're on Item B.
Thank you, yes. Okay, so this is authorization to teach departmentalized classes. And what this essentially allows us to do is, I'm going to share the background information. So it allows, this resolution allows us to have a teacher teach on a yearly basis in a departmentalized class if the teacher has completed 18 semester units credits of coursework or nine semester units of upper or graduate division coursework in the subject, except special education. So this, this, this allows us that, as well as it, this resolution also allows on the, on consent of a yearly basis, a holder of a single subject or standard secondary teaching credential to teach classes in grades five through eight in middle school, provided that the teacher has completed 12 minimum semester units or six upper division or graduate division units of coursework at an accredited institution in the subject to be taught. And lastly, this also allows a holder of a multiple subject or standard elementary teaching credential to teach in the subject of, in departmentalized classes below grade nine with 12 semester units of coursework or six upper division or graduate semester units in the subject to be taught. So it gives us flexibility when we're working with a need for single subject classes or if we have to do departmentalize with our sixth grade teachers to teach two core classes, it gives us flexibility.
6B? Dr. Young?
I second. I remember that we accept the most.
Vice President Amboy?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges is absent. Trustee Flores?
Aye.
Trustee Young?
Aye.
Vice President Amboy?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Oh, Dr. Young has a question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Where there's a special ed hiring coming in? Especially if you can hire, you know, with the specific category.
Where does the special ed hiring come in with the specific categories that are needed? I didn't see it, it is one of the.
Yeah, it's not listed here. You are, you have to have specific classes in a, a specific area, like multiple subject. It doesn't fall here. It ha, it's, it's a, its own body, which is not required by this process, probably due to the shortage of special education teachers. Yeah, it, it's, it's a separate, it's a, it's a different entity.
So my next question, I guess, is how are we going to address the issue of not having special ed teachers?
Well, what we're doing.
I don't know in specific areas, but we have a.
Yeah, we, we.
Get your flow of that.
We do. Well, one of the things that we're really working hard to do, I know with our new executive director, is determine if we are actually structuring those classes in the right way. For example, do we have, you know, too many mild-moderate classes when we're seeing a, an increase in mild, mod severe, right? More students who are identified with autism, which may require a different credential. So maybe our focus is shifted. So we may have some teachers already that we need to shift in a different direction and work with them to get credentialed in those other areas. That may be an area that could help us, as well as some restructuring. We may not have the same needs. It, the programmatic design may be different, so that we're still able to serve students, but not requiring those same course, the same, the same credentials, if that makes sense. So redistributing and looking at our current resources and making some adjustments and then feeling those needs that are actually aligned to our new programmatic shifts. So that's some of the work that's happening behind the scenes that could help this challenge.
Thank you, Dr. Patrick.
Thank you.
We're down to reports. I know we were just here last Wednesday and last night, so this might be brief. See Superintendent Aurelio?
I'm going to make it really long. No, just kidding. So good evening, trustees, staff and members of the Vallejo City Unified Community. So I'd like to begin tonight's report by extending my sincere appreciation to the African-American Parent Network for hosting their Real Talk event last Thursday evening at Vallejo High School. I was honored to join Trustees Flores and Trustee Hodges, along with Assistant Superintendent Hector Topasio and Director Dr. Edison Kelly for an evening of honest dialogue with our community. Together, we responded to thoughtful questions regarding the district's recent school closures and our roadmap for future school consolidation. Events like these are vital to maintaining transparency, fostering trust, and keeping our community engaged as we navigate this important work together. As we continue to strengthen our leadership across the district, I want to share that we are currently in the process of scheduling interviews for several key open positions. These include principal roles at Jesse Belto High School, Vallejo High School, Penny Cook Elementary and Highland Elementary. In addition, we are conducting a national search for our next Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. They'll have big shoes to fill. Each of these leadership positions are critical to ensuring that our schools are guided by visionary, student-centered leaders who will help move our district forward. We are going to include our two student trustees in the process as well. But they won't be able to talk as much during the process. No, you guys can't fight. Lastly, I want to acknowledge the extraordinary work of our district teams who have remained focused on strengthening our internal systems and procedures. Thanks to their dedication, we are optimistic that within the next two months, we will receive confirmation of full release from state and county receivership. This would mark a significant milestone for the Vallejo City Unified School District, affirming our collective efforts and demonstrating our readiness to stand independently. It also signals the beginning of a new chapter, one where we continue building on our momentum and driving toward a future of excellence for all students. So before I close, though, I want to extend a warm invitation to our Spanish-speaking community. Por favor, unese a nosotros el 28 de mayo para uniendo voces empoderando a las familias latinas en la educación. Un evento dedicado a fortalecer y informar a nuestras familias latinas sobre oportunidades educativas y recursos del distrito. El evento se llevará a cabo en español con interpretación en inglés disponible para todos los asistentes. Tendrá lugar a las cinco y media hasta las siete de la tarde en la escuela de Vallejo Charter. So I'll say it in English. Please join us on May 28th for Uniting Voices, Empowering Latino Families in Education, an event dedicated to uplifting and informing Latino families about educational opportunities and district resources. This event will be conducted in Spanish with English interpretation available to ensure all are welcome. It takes place from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Vallejo Charter School campus. I believe we also plan on having a student performance attached to this as well. Thank you, and that's my report.
Start with our board member reports, if we have any, since it's just been a week. Uh, Trustee Flores?
Report. I have had a busy week. Anyhow, I also, like Superintendent Aurelio said, I attended the AAPN's Real Talk. Some of the things that were brought up were, like you said, school closures, past and future. Also issues of transportation, that's why I went Soul Transit here, I asked a little bit about that. Since it's Real Talk, right, they, they brought up issues of racism on, on some of the campuses and what the district's addressing it. The lack of leadership, excuse me, a lack of African-Americans in, in, in leadership positions throughout the district on sites. And they had a very poignant question asking, you know, why, why did we feel our district was where it was at? You know, we all, we all had to ask the question. So I think the talk was real. I, I think it was informative. Some of the feedback I heard was that, that they, they, they had clarification on things. They, especially on the school closure, the process, the 7-11 committees, et cetera. The importance of, for them to sign up for the upcoming 7-11 committees. I also attended the SALPA CAC, SALPA Special Education Local Plan Area, Community Advisory Committee. You know, some of the stuff I, I learned and I just kind of wanted to share. So, and, and I share because it was new for me. So I would assume for a lot of families that don't have children in, in special ed or IEPs or 504s, et cetera, or wondering what, what does that even mean? What are all these just letters and numbers and names and, and et cetera? You know, there, there are certain processes. You, you don't just drop in to, to special ed. You know, that's some of the criticisms I've heard coming on, on, on the board and just in general throughout the years in the district that, that our school district tends to have a lot of IEPs and our kids a special ed, things like that. And we talked about this, the issue of dyslexia, so far as how it's the diagnosis and whatnot. Who the ultimate authority is on a school site when it comes to? Who the ultimate, uh, uh, authority is on a school site when it comes to, uh, giving the information when, when your child, when, when you want, have that referral for, for them to be, uh, tested for special ed. My understanding was that the school principal is the ultimate person you give it to because parents that are going through this said that they would get a lot of misinformation or, or there would be no clarity. Even the whole process, the, uh, some of the parents that have been going through it so far as having their kids get an IEP plan, tho- they felt that the whole process getting there was, was a little cumbersome, sometimes off-putting by staff. So, one, one recommendation that, that I made in, in this was that how do we as a district include this kind of information, just as general information to all families? Just so that if the time and place comes where, where your child needs these services in IEP, a, a 504, or SST, all these acronyms aren't just these foreign things and, and where we can give them support. Because like I said, these parents talked about how, when they were going through the process, they felt that they couldn't reach out to anybody and, and they felt scared and overwhelmed and, and it's a very emotional thing when you're, you're being told that your child has something going on. So, so it was just very eye-opening for me in, in that, um, be anything else that really stood out for me? So the, the last thing that, that I, um, participated in, which was a whole new concept for me and a whole new experience was, um, learning walks. I, I participated in a learning walk with, um, with staff and, uh, Assistant Superintendent, uh, Topasio yesterday at Cave. And I'll be there at Patterson tomorrow morning. And it was just a very eye-opening and educational, uh, experience for my, for myself, coming from outside of education to see what the process are, what, what, what we're looking for. And it gave me a better idea now when I'm sitting here. And that's one of the reasons why, when I was, during one of the presentations, I was, I, I specifically asked what a DOK was 'cause I learned about it yesterday, you know, and, uh, so I, I think these are things that are important for, for families to know about as well. To an extent of how are our teachers being evaluated? What are they being evaluated on? I mean, it, a- again, it was just a real, uh, interesting learning experience and, and seeing all the hard work that the teachers put into it. It's, it's, it's teachers don't just show up and are given something and they just do a bunch of checkmarks and go down the list of things to do for the day. There, there's a lot of work involved and it's, and it's sometimes just the very little minute things of ensuring that the student paying attention to the, the direction of which way the paper's gonna go or, or how to put it down or just these, these little things that, that make huge differences, you know? And, and that's what we're evaluating on to ensure, at the end of the day, our, our, our kids are getting the best possible education. So I look forward to attending tomorrow and, um, with that, that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Flores, trust, uh, Dr. Young.
Uh, trustee Flores, thank you for doing the overview. I was also there, uh, attending that, uh, the SALPA, um, Community Advisory Committee. I was, uh, very impressed with Kristen, Kristen Hardy's, um, the Executive Director of Special Ed. Her ability to deliver information that's very technical. So it was broken down so people could understand it. That's the most important part of communication. You can tell them all, you can talk to them all day up here, but if they're not comprehending what you're saying, what use is it to them when they have to go out and, um, uh, actually apply it? So I was very impressed with that and, um, we'll keep it moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Amboy?
My report's the same as yesterday, I have no report.
And for me, just working on practice tests and getting ready for CAS for my third graders. Take it for the very first time. And that's it for reports. Now we're onto, we don't have, um, community forum, closed session is not needed. Announcements of upcoming meetings. Tomorrow is the two-by-two in the main chambers of the city hall, uh, at four-thirty. And you said both of you will be there, do you present, present tomorrow?
Can I ask a quick question about the, does the pres- is the presentation we are going to do, will it be about the Washington DC trip? So we presented to them already a few weeks before. Yes.
This is the two-by-two though, it's not, it's not the full city council, it's just, it's a different entity.
Then, yeah, yeah, we'll present again.
And then next, um, once, in our May meetings, May seventh, regularly scheduled meeting and May twenty-first. That's all for upcoming meetings. Report agenda items. Flores?
Just wanted to see, um, get a follow-up on where we're at with, uh, PLTI. I know that I've talked about that in the past, they came and spoke with, uh, with cabinet members and just kinda see where we're going with that. Thank you.
With that, bit of order. We are journeying at nine sixteen, thank you, good night everyone.